All right, well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Committee of the Whole. I'm going to call our meeting to order at 6:31 PM. We're going to start with a moment of silent reflection. Please join me in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Just a few housekeeping reminders. If council members can please keep their cameras on so residents can view them on the live stream. And staff and presenters will keep the cameras off until it's their turn to speak. And we'd like to remind everybody to mute their mics when they are not speaking. I want to thank everybody and welcome everybody in joining us online or via telephone for this virtual meeting. And before we actually move on with the business of the virtual meeting today, I'm going to turn it over to our clerk to give a little bit of an update on what's happening in our council chambers, the scope and the magnitude of the work that's in front of us so that the public has a better understanding of what's involved in all the technology updates in our chambers and why we are meeting online as we have. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Shreshma, please.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. So it has come to my attention that some questions have been received with respect to the AV upgrades in council chambers. I'm happy to provide some information for councils' information as well as for the public. A report with respect to this matter was presented at the August 19th meeting. So for those of you who haven't attended that meeting, you're absolutely welcome to go look at the video or review the report. You can also contact the clerk's office, and we'd be happy to provide a copy of that report. It is quite fulsome in the overview that we provide with respect to the status update of the AV upgrades. But to provide a bit of a synopsis of what we're doing, we're undertaking a major $175,000 upgrade to the audiovisual system in council chambers. It's a large, complex project. This is a heritage building. It's also important that we take the time to do it right. It's not just about microphones and audio. We're updating live streaming technology. We are installing additional viewing capacity for the public as well as for council. And we're also installing hybrid meeting software. So it is quite a complex project. Similar projects in municipalities of our size can take up to six months, but we are working diligently to shorten that timeline, and we're going to be completing ours much quicker than that, and we're doing it as responsibly as possible as well. I spoke to this when I presented my status update on this project in August, but I'm very proud of the process that the municipality has undertaken to procure a very strong vendor for this project. We expect that they're going to be delivering modern technology that's going to improve accessibility. It's going to support hybrid meetings, and it's going to enhance the experience for both in-person and virtual participants. So as Report CS 1425 stated and has been communicated to the public, while this work is taking place, the meetings are going to be held virtually. This is to protect the integrity of the actual equipment. We don't want members of the public to be in that room when equipment hasn't been completely installed. This is for public safety as well because there is work that is happening in council chambers, which may not be safe for residents as the work is taking place. So in accordance with our procedure by law, the council and committee meetings are going to be held virtually for the meeting of August, excuse me, for the meeting of September, just to ensure that continuity, to ensure transparency, and maximum access to members of the public. And we do anticipate returning to council chambers with upgraded technology in October 2025, so in just the next couple of weeks. I also want to say that if members of the public have questions related to this project, please contact the clerk's office. You can call us by calling 905-885-4544, or you can email admin@porthope.ca. We are available to answer any questions for you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much for that update. So back to our virtual meeting today. We will have opportunities for engagement from the public during question period, and instructions on how you can raise your hand virtually have been provided on the agenda. So please do look at those, and when the time comes, I will repeat all of these instructions again. So we'll move on to our land acknowledgement. The municipality of Port Hope exists on the lands of the Mishisagit Anishnabik Traditional Territory covered by the Williams Treaties. We honor and recognize First Peoples as rights holders and stewards of the lands and waters on which we have the privilege to live, work, and play, including the Gannaraska Forest and River. We pay respect to elders, past, present, and emerging. We commit to actions towards truth and reconciliation by recognizing the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, strengthening ties with First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples, especially those who make their home in Port Hope, and learning from indigenous ways of knowing and being. We do so by recognizing the past and working towards a shared future. Moving on to item number two, are there any disclosures of continuing interest? I note that none were received in advance of tonight's meeting. Seeing none, moving on to item number three, correspondence. We're going to move on to 3.1. Chief Simpson, Alderville First Nation, re-request for letter of support from the municipality of Port Hope regarding rights of personhood for Rice Lake. I know that this is a topic that has come up in front of our council previously. And just by way of an update, Chief Simpson did actually advance the cause of legal personhood of both Rice Lake and the Gannaraska River during Earth Day at the United Nations in New York earlier this year. He presented at the first high-level meeting on harmony with nature and living well. And this is a next step in the process that started over a year ago now. So this is the background. These are just some of the things that have happened since we last talked about this particular issue. And so at this point, I would like to pass my chair on to the deputy mayor because I do have a motion that I would like to bring forward, which takes us just beyond receiving this item for information, but rather taking some additional actions around it. So Deputy Mayor, do you mind taking over the chair of the meeting at this point?
Yes, sorry. Yes. So did you want to make a motion?
Correct. Yes, yes. So I'd like to put forward a motion that we do receive this letter of support for information. We receive it for information and that staff be directed to contact Chief Simpson and Alderville First Nation to request further information regarding the implications of the proposed letter of support, the details of what the letter should entail, and some of the associated timelines. So pretty straightforward, a little bit more information and understanding what exactly is needed and some of the timelines around that. So I don't know if the clerk wants to put this up. Does anybody feel the need to see this in writing? Or do you understand the gist of what I'm asking for?
So I am fine with that. Does somebody want to see the motion before seconding it? No? Okay, so can I have a second or please? So seconded by Councilor Claire. Is there any other discussion? Okay, so I'll call the vote, all in favor. And that is unanimous. So I'll pass it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So we'll move on to item 3.2, Northumberland County Northumberland Physician Recruitment Advisory Committee. So I'm just going to speak very briefly to this. In June of this year, actually, it was by the time it was, no, it was in June, the county council approved the hiring of a physician recruitment specialist and the formation of an advisory committee to guide and support the work of this recruitment specialist. And in July, the county put out a call for two volunteer positions from local businesses to be part of that committee. And the committee itself is going to be composed of a real wide variety of voices, doctors, representatives from the Ontario Health Team, local municipalities, county staff, and then, of course, the members of the business community for whom that call went out in July. And so every municipality across the county puts forward a name for this advisory committee, and we've been asked to do the same. So that's the background, and that is the context of this quest. So we do need to put forward a person from our council to be part of that advisory committee. So that's really what this letter is all about. And I did attend the county health committee this morning, and all the other municipalities have put forward names. So it's upon us to do the same. Counselor Mink.
I have a question before we do that. So when I was reading the report, it said to appoint a member of council or from the community. And I believe it also said it is a two-year appointment. So would the expectation be that if it is a person from council, that that person continue to sit for two years even if they do not return to council?
No, I think there's flexibility about revisiting this. I think they were just looking for some stability in some of the other participation. But we certainly wouldn't be the only municipality that would be putting forward a council representative for that committee. Any other questions? Counselor Claire.
I know that this is related, obviously, to the work that you and Counselor Les championed with regards to our walk-in clinic. Unfortunately, Counselor Les isn't with us, but I was curious to know if you had had any conversations about whether that was a position he was looking to fill or if it's something you were, no. Okay.
No, I have not had a chance to speak with him on that. Just another piece of information that might be helpful is that I am the representative that's currently sitting on the West Northumberland Recruitment and Retention Committee, but that committee or that board is going to be expected to disband in a very short while as there's more of a centralized effort around physician recruitment in the county. Deputy Mayor.
Sorry, so just one more question, and this is related to Counselor Claire's question as well as Les. And I know Les has been involved previously as well. So I'm just asking more of a procedural question. Can this be carried over to the council meeting in two weeks for the final vote without actually naming someone? Is that a possibility while we potentially wait to hear back from Les?
I'll turn that over to the clerk. I will note that we are the one outstanding municipality on this matter and that the announcement around the physician recruitment specialist and the committee have been, they're awaiting our decision on this.
So Madam Deputy Mayor, the final disposition of this matter would be on September 16th at the council meeting. It could be potentially earlier as well. If council decides to hold a special council meeting, it is dependent on the decision of council. In this particular situation, choosing, you know, you could choose somebody tonight, but obviously, council has the final vote for when that decision is made at the council meeting.
Counselor Adam.
Thank you. Do we know what the commitment level is of this committee and what days that they're meeting? I was trying to read through, and I don't recall seeing any time that they're meeting as well as what the commitment levels are. This is something that I would absolutely love to do. I am just worried that I am at my capacity right now, and I don't know if I have the time to actually do this, so.
The terms of reference are still to be finalized, Counselor Adam, but if it's anything like the previous boards or committees that have met around these kinds of issues, it's typically about once a month. And typically for, they're usually between two- and three-hour meetings. Counselor Claire.
Yeah, I'm sort of in the same boat as Adam. I think it's something, obviously, it's of great importance to the community, and it's something that I would be willing to put my name forward for. And if Les, if it was something that Les, Counselor Les, was particularly interested in, given he's already been working on this issue, I assume that the clerk, we could just, we could swap that name out at the next meeting if that was to happen, okay?
Yes.
Then I think I would be happy to put my name forward then. If that's agreeable.
And just circling back to Counselor Adam, I just want to make sure that we also give you a chance to, you did ask the question about the meeting. And Counselor Adam, the meetings are in the evenings.
So yeah, I greatly appreciate that. If Counselor Claire is willing to do it and she would like to, that is good. I would love to do something like this. I know the need that we have in this community, and I would love to, but also I do not have a lot of time left in my schedule. So if Counselor Claire has the availability, I think that she will do a wonderful job.
Okay, so then we, Counselor Claire has put up her hand for this. We can, of course, have a follow-up conversation with this when Counselor Les is back in attendance, but would somebody like to make a motion on behalf of Counselor Claire? Counselor Mink.
So I'll make a motion to appoint, no, sorry, just as a point of clarity, do I need to say to appoint Claire or temporarily until, or how would that motion be? I'm going to ask the clerk, knowing that we may change that. Do I appoint Claire and then we amend it next meeting if that's the case?
I think that would be the easiest way to do it, Counselor Mink, is at this point, you can nominate. I do want to note that council does have the option to nominate Counselor Andrews today as well, if that is something that they wish to do.
Okay, so that may change things. Just because I'm happy to nominate the appointment of Counselor Claire, but I just know that Les has a background in that and obviously, an invested interest. So, and I don't want, I feel uncomfortable speaking for him without him here, but if I were to choose, if it was up to me, I would choose Les. So I'm not too sure. So Claire has her hand up, so I'll let her speak.
Counselor Claire.
How about we go forward, assuming we're appointing me as I volunteered? I will make a commitment to get to have a conversation with Counselor Les between now and the council meeting so that we come to the table two weeks from now with clarity around who the final name will be in the motion.
I'm going back to the clerk. Is that agreeable?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Sorry, so then I will make a motion to appoint Counselor Claire to the Northumberland Physicians Recruitment Advisory Committee, or Counselor Holloway-Woodwanni, to make it official.
And Counselor Claire, are you okay with evenings? Because I did note your face when, and I don't know, perhaps that's going to change. Perhaps with the new terms of reference, there'll be different times for those meetings.
Yeah, I'll be able to make it work. I'm sure like with any committee, when we get to the table, we'll be able to have a conversation about what's going to work for the people who are at the table, and I'm sure we'll be able to make it work.
Okay, so we have the motion on the table. Is there a second for that? Counselor Todd, any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, and that is passed. So we now move on to item number four, items for consideration. 4.1, Presentation by Bob Wallace, Chairperson, Erin Oxon, Vice Chairperson, and Margaret Scott, CEO, Port Hope Public Library Board, Read 2026 Port Hope Public Library Budget. So we'll turn it over to our presenters. If you can unmute your microphone and speak and share on your screen, that would be much appreciated. Thank you. We're turning it over to you now.
Thank you very much, Mary Lena. It's Bob Wallace here, and I'm the Chair of the Port Hope Public Library. And Shreshma, you have the presentation that slides?
Yes, one moment, please.
Okay. So while we're doing that, I just want to thank everyone for joining us tonight and the opportunity for us to present our budget for the 2026 fiscal year, which is coming up soon. And we're going to outline the budget process and considerations that we have to come up with a final budget for the municipal library. So, next slide, please. So things we are going to cover tonight are some considerations for the budget, some updates from departments within the library, and budget summary, the numbers part. So I'm going to do the first two, and Margaret Scott, our CEO, will look after the final one, the budget summary. Next slide, please. Next one, please. So some of the considerations that we had. So our mission statement for the library is to deliver quality, community-focused library services with a commitment to equitable and open access to all resources. And the key initiatives that we've got for the 2022-27 period is a strategic plan, and our focus is going to be including increasing our impact in the community, enhancing our participant engagement, achieving operational excellence, and increasing our ability to adapt and expanding our reach, which are parts of our strategic plan. Next slide, please. Some metrics. We keep a lot of metrics within the municipality library in order to gauge how we're doing. So we have close to 6,000 residents who use their library card on a regular basis, which is an increase of 3% in total usage of the library services. On the average, we issue 30 new library cards each month. And at the end of 2025, the number of visitors to the Mary J. Benson site is 5.5% higher than the previous year. We've also instituted some partnerships with 20 active community activities. And some of those include the Port Hope Parks and Recreation Department. We've had a day as on several times with the Parks and Rec Department, in particular, so that we can look at what services they are providing and what we are providing so that there's no duplication of services. And we're working closely with them. We work with the Capitol Theater, the ACO, Trinity College, the Agricultural Society, and Northumberland Community Healthcare. Participation in these programs is growing by 8.9%. So we have a total of 138 different programs at the library, and attendance has been 3,500 participants year-to-date. Here we are in early September. So those are some of our metrics. Next slide, please. We're talking about the accomplishments. And we have rolled out, sorry, go back one slide, please.
One moment, please.
No problem. So, okay, what, next slide then? Thank you. So what we've done over the last little while is we've rolled out a new strategic plan. And I referenced the pillars of that are outreach, engagement, and adaptability within the library as we provide services to the community and new and advanced services that are coming along. We did a tremendous enhancement in the children's library at Mary J. Benson. And it is, if you haven't been there, it is beautifully done. It's really popular and lots of activities. The Friends of the Library had a fundraiser and raised, they had a two-year goal of $20,000 and raised close to that. And most of that was used for the children's library, the main floor of the library. We'd also transitioned to our new delivery service model. And that is that the staff working as a team, wider responsibilities for each person, and much more engagement with the visiting public. We also spent some time, and we've completed a survey of those that in Ward II that are using the Canton Library, the hub, as we call it, to determine the needs, the expectations, and best use of our dollars in the Canton Library for Ward II. Next slide, please, Shreshma. So things that were challenges and trends and opportunities. We want to maintain accessible digital platforms to educate and inform the community. We're defining the role of public libraries in this ever-changing technology world. Our ability to adapt and create services that are inclusive, engaging, and suitable for our diverse community. Our community is changing, and we want to make sure that our services provided fit our community. Management of the IT systems, which are so important, as we've seen over the recent weeks, in electronics services within our existing budget funding models. To consider options for a new service delivery model for the rural area, we are constantly looking at how best to utilize the hub or to provide services for our Ward II residents. And also investigate how this new world of artificial intelligence is going to affect the library services. So those are some of the trends and challenges that we're looking at. Next slide, please. Thank you. We want to increase our awareness of the role and impact of our community public library to build a strong donor base. The Friends of Library are so important to us, but we want to increase that and strive to have a bigger base. Organizations, businesses, industry possibly are things that we're looking at. Continue to foster, encourage new relationships with our municipal partners to affect maximum effectiveness. And that is so that we can make sure we're not duplicating any services that other departments are providing. And in particular, we're working closely with Parks and Recreation and Culture on those activities. We're going to regularly communicate with the council. We've done that in the past, and we're going to do that again going forward. And we also want to look at building our profile in the community with effective marketing and communication utilizing its new website. We are revamping our Port Hope Library website completely, and it'll be a much better tool for the community and us to actively use. And of course, our Friends of the Library, we want to continue with helping them and be part of that to help with fundraising and partnership building within the community. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Margaret for the budget summary.
Thank you, Bob, for your participation tonight. And I'd also like to acknowledge the attendance of some of our board members who are joining us virtually tonight. I'd like to share a few comments for this 2026 budget before moving on with the actual budget presentation. The proposed 2026 budget is similar to last year's, but with a few exceptions, which will The proposed 26 budget is similar to last year's, but with a few exceptions, which will be addressed shortly. For the board's consideration and support, staff proposed that 2026 be a year for review and planning for the future. And there was agreement between the board and the staff that this was a good time for us to to take that step to look forward with respect to our services at both locations. As part of this review, we expect to assess our collections, hours of operation, staffing needs, public seating and study capacity, space requirements for public service against professional library standards. Additionally, we'll be looking at working areas and storage requirements at the Mary J. Benson, Mary J. Benson Branch in particular. The budget includes a reduced schedule of service at the hub for the next year. Currently, the branch is open 12 hours a week for 50 weeks a year. We close for two weeks at Christmas. This year, we closed for six unplanned weeks during the renovation and construction of the lower level to prepare for the arrival of the daycare at the Port Hope Community Hub. And then a seventh week, we close in August as a result of the paving of the driveway and the parking lots at the site. Decisions to close were made to address safety concerns related to our staff and also the visiting public. And we made these in consultation with PRC staff. As part of the continued review and consideration of future service at this location, we have proposed a shortened year for 2026. The library would be closed for the months of January, February, November, and December. These are typically the months when we experience issues with respect to weather, snow plowing, and at times staffing capacity. The branch would open or reopen mid-March, so the school break, also known as the March break, would be our opening week, and close at the end of October. During this time, staff, we would operate as a public library. We would work together with the board on a forward-looking plan, building on the hub branch review report. So the data that's been collected by the staff and board review committee will be reviewed by the board this month. And then from there, there will be some direction provided. When open, the staff will build on what we do well and is successful at the branch and focus on updating our collections, engagement with our community regarding the type of service they need and how they want it delivered. We also will be in discussion with the daycare personnel, as well as other community partners, resum opportunities in terms of service delivery and programming. Our current lease with the municipality will remain in effect. And during the closed months, the space currently occupied by the library would be used as additional workspace and for staff training. We could move on to the first budget slide, please. Thank you. This is summary of our expenditures at the top and then our funding sources. With the exception of government grants, which are fairly static, all these other areas are somewhat unpredictable. So it's it's based on what we've experienced in the past, but these numbers can vary depending on the activities throughout the year. Next, please. Enclosed here are six highlights, three of which reflect a decreased financial requirement and three which require an increased financial requirement. And I'll speak briefly to each one of these. The hub branch staff wages and benefits reflected in the staff model that we just spoke to. There will be some savings there as a result of closure for the four months. Software licenses. We've reduced the number of licensed resources. And as a result, there's a savings there of $7,000. And contracted services, this is a reallocation of expenses to another budget line. Increased financial requirements. IT technical support. We find ourselves lagging behind in terms of the appropriate software and hardware, and also the required security for our IT systems. And this is a result of work that wasn't provided by our current service provider. We will not be renewing our contract for 2026. We therefore will be looking for a new provider of service for our networking, in particular, for 2026. And staff are already working on that particular project. The increased funds are required to purchase, identify the hardware, the equipment, and the software, as well as to provide adequate security. Proper security will significantly reduce any risk to Port Hope Public Library and also to the municipality of Port Hope. We don't want to be in a similar position as Toronto Public Library. So we want to make this investment so that we are secure and following all the appropriate ways in which to maintain our IT systems. The municipality of Port Hope IT department has suggested a significant increase, which is a one-time expense, but it is part of a cycle. So that in four or five years' time, there would be an additional requirement for IT technical support with respect to security and potentially software and hardware. Also included in this increased financial requirement is support for our new website. So it's a brand-new expense. The website, it will be rolled out soon, no later than the end of this year. And starting in January of 2026, there will be an ongoing support payment in order to maintain the website. Next is electronic resources. This request is, has come about because of an increased demand and growing use of our electronic resources. The licenses for these resources are quite expensive. We do belong to several provincial consortia, so we do benefit some reduced costs with respect to these licenses. But we would like to, as part of the review of our collections, we want to look at electronic resources. So we would like to increase the budget in order to meet the current demand. And that'll give us a better sense of where, what we need going forward with respect to funding for the electronic resources. This includes both the streaming services that we provide, Ancestry, Hoopla, Libby, those may be resources that you use or are familiar with. They're all currently in place at Port Hope Public Library. And lastly, the branch telephone. The increase here is for the purchase of two cell phones for senior management staff. We don't have those at the moment. We use our personal cell phones. And I think the time has come, from an operational point of view, that the library provides cell phones for its two senior staff. And the balance of that is for the telephone service at the Mary J. Benson Branch. Next slide, please. And using our library reserve, offset the budget for electronic resources by utilizing $10,000 from our reserve, a one-time expense, to give us some sense of what the costs truly are or might be for electronic resources going forward. Next slide, please. The levy requirement is there, 1.1, $1,143,760. There is no capital expense this year. We want to use next year again for reviewing what our capital needs might be. So we do expect there will be a capital budget for 2027. Thank you. And if there are any questions, both Bob and I are available online here to address your questions.
Thank you very much. And I think we can stop sharing the screen at this point so that we can enter into some conversation. So I'll turn it over to my colleagues to ask any questions. Counselor Adam, go ahead, please.
Thank you. And Bob, thank you for your part of the presentation. Loved it. And Margaret, same thing. Thank you very much for your presentation. I have quite a few questions. So I think I'm going to start off with the, right near the very started presentation, you were talking about the 6,000 different people coming to the Mary J. Benson, is that right? Sorry, it's really difficult with the Zoom to go back and forth on everything. So 6,000 residents using their library card on an annual basis?
Yeah, so that's, I can speak to that. It's, that represents a number of people who have an active library card, so have used at least once during the past year for any, any services, not just checking out books, but whenever you need a library card, pardon me, need a library card in order to access electronic resources, for instance.
Okay, so those, and are they all Port Hope addresses? Those 6,000?
Primarily, yes.
Do we know what the Port Hope address number is?
No, I can forward that information to you. It's certainly, you know, 90% of our residents live in the municipality of Port Hope. We do have some people who buy or pay for a library membership. We also have residents who, from Coburg, we enjoy reciprocal borrowing with the Coburg Public Library. So we had, those residents factor into that number as well. They also have a Port Hope card, but they may have a Coburg address.
Okay. I would love to get the information on how many Port Hope addresses as Port Hope residents paying this levy portion here.
Excuse me, Counselor, so those would be non-residents that are purchasing the...
Yeah, I'm talking about the operation, actually. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. And then, do you know what the visitor count of the Mary J. Benson is? Like, how many people come through per day?
I can give you a monthly total.
Yeah, that would be fantastic.
So on average, it varies from month to month, and this would be, so about 5,200 per month, on average.
That's awesome.
Depends what's happening in the municipality and the weather and the time, all those sorts of things.
Absolutely. Madam Chair, is it okay if I ask a few more questions? Or do you want me to pass it off? I see that Counselor Hatcher also has his hand up right now.
Go ahead and ask, and then I'll move on to Counselor Todd.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So I have a quick question on the, on the budget when it comes to wages. First off, how many full-time staff do you have and how many part-time staff? And then the second part on that is, I noticed that the wage increase for the part-time is a 3% increase, while the full-time is a 9.8% increase. Is this a hiring of a new staff member? Is this part of the negotiations with the union?
I make, excuse me, I'm making a few notes as well as we go along.
Of course, I know, yeah, I'm sorry.
In terms of the number of staff, we have four full-time staff and 11 part-time staff. We are a unionized workplace. And so we, with QP, QP Local. So in terms of the part-time, all our part-time staff are unionized. And so they are governed by the collective agreement. And so your math is correct. That is the increase that was negotiated and is included in the current collective agreement for the part-time staff. With respect to full-time staff, this year, there was an adjustment made to a full-time position, which resulted in a fairly significant increase on the municipality of Port Hope compensation grid to put that, to place that job in an appropriate band. And then additionally, next year, there will be some movement through the grid as well for another full-time staff member.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you. And then I just have one more question. It's about the overlap with the Parks and Rec. And so during, during speaking there, there was, there was talks about working with the Parks and Rec Department on different programs. Which programs are you working with the Parks and Rec Department with the municipality? And the only reason I ask the question is, we all know that at the end of the day, the taxpayers are paying for all of these different things. So if we're paying for things at the Parks and Rec Department, then we're paying for things at the library. That means taxpayers are paying for it twice, right? So I'm just trying to make sure that we don't have those overlaps. So just which programs are you working with the Parks and Rec Department right now?
So we have a member of our staff whose position is she's programming and community engagement. So she could probably give you more specific details, but generally, it's things like culture days. And when we, so we each have ideas for programming. So we share those to see if there's an opportunity to work together. And sometimes there is, and sometimes there isn't. So that, that happens at a a certain staff level where people actually are doing the developing and implementing as well. So I think in the communication I sent after the July 15th presentation, I did list some of the ways in which PRC and the Port Hope Public Library have cooperated. And there are, there are a number, but that one, I mentioned culture days because that's timely. It's coming in the month of September. So there'll be some coordination there as well. And I just, with respect to overlap, I a few weeks ago, I met with Ali Oberon, the manager of Recreation, Culture, and Events for PRC, and we had a chat about what we had in common and where we were different. And we looked at our vision statements, mission statements. PRC Department calls them principles. We call them values. But there, there isn't a lot of, we have very distinct roles. Lifestyle, outdoors, using recreational facilities. And in our cases, lifelong learning and providing library-based services to our, to the broad community. And one of the distinctions is that most of our programming is free of charge, so that everyone in the community is able to participate in one way or another. So we did feel quite comfortable in knowing that we each have distinct roles and that where we, we encourage our staff to collaborate and coordinate where possible, knowing that we also have a very distinct operational plans as well.
Awesome. And has there been any programs that have stopped because there was an overlap or?
I think that, so going back a bit in time, that there probably was, our staff were doing some sort of yoga-based program at the Port Hope Community Hub. We're no longer providing that because PRC is in a better position to that, to do that programming. And it fits with their mandate. Absolutely.
Okay. And then just one more quick, sorry, I'm sorry, Todd, I realize that you're waiting, and I apologize for that. When it comes to the IT tech support, I heard that you were talking with the municipal tech. Is all your tech through the municipality of Port Hope, or do you have somebody separate?
You know, currently, we have a separate service provider. We have a contract, an annual contract, and we pay a fee for support and service.
Thank you. Appreciate.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Adam. Is that, is that the last of the questions? Yes? I can circle back to you. So I'll move on to Counselor Todd now.
Great, thanks very much. Admittedly, I also have a list. So, Alana, would you prefer me to keep mine short and move along, or just go through them?
I think just go through them, just to be, you know, equal with the consideration given to Counselor Adam.
All right, fair deal. Thank you. Bob, Margaret, thanks so much. Always, always a pleasure having these presentations. It's always insightful to see what's going on at the library. Margaret, I do have some questions about the budget I'd like to ask you about. I want to start with the funding sources. So I was looking at your 2025 budget funding sources and looking at the year-to-date and noticing there's quite a gap in there. And then 2026 has gone to sort of back into the 2025 budget. Could you maybe give us a bit more context as to how that funding source is going to come in for the balance of this year and how it'll be shored up for next year?
You're referring to the budget that's part of the package?
Yeah, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the one that's in the package. Uh, just looking at what was budgeted for provincial grants, and, and you doubted that, you know, these aren't necessarily givens. Um, but also recognizing, you know, there's, you know, sixty, seventy, almost seventy-five thousand dollars that was in the budget. It looks as though it, it may not be showing up in twenty twenty-five, but we've got it back in twenty twenty-six. Is there a, is there a plan in play as to how we're going to get that revenue or that, uh, funding source in play by the end of the year?
Um, oh, I'll start with the provincial funding. Um, that is fairly stable. Uh, that's, there are several grants that compose that thirty-three thousand dollars. Um, just point of interest that the, what we call the Public Library Operating Grant, which libraries have to apply for, um, that funding formula has not changed in twenty-five years. So this is the same number that we've been, you know, you'll see this number quite, you know, if you go back through the previous budgets. Um, in terms of, uh, last year, we were very fortunate to receive a very large donation, um, which was very helpful to us with respect to, to the revenue line and also offsetting some of our, um, uh, cost expenditures. That's, that's the kind of, um, gift that you can't, um, predict. So as one of the strategic initiatives that Bob reviewed a bit earlier, we want to expand our donor base. So we want to look at ways, whether it's applying for money through foundations, um, or, or, uh, corporations, just to expand it beyond just sort of the community-based donations, so that we are, our, our, um, our donations are on the rise there.
Yeah, I think that's where I'm, I'm actually drawing my attention. Not so much about last year. I appreciate, I think actually I remember that, uh, you shared with us last year that you, you got a very generous gift that came in, which is, which was kind. Um, I'm just looking at the budget of twenty-eight thousand dollars is what we were expecting this year. It looks like we have sixty-three dollars that's actually come in year-to-date, and we've got twenty thousand. I'm just sort of curious as to how, you know, how that money is, is earmarked and how we think it's going to come in. And then with the provincial grant, if I'm hearing it correctly, you're saying that we were budgeting thirty-three thousand, and we can pretty much bank on the fact that we'll get thirty-three thousand coming in before the end of the year, so not, uh, I don't have to sit here and sweat on that. Uh, it's just a matter of the check getting into the bank, um, but, um, but on the donations, then maybe you can explain a little bit more as to, you know, how, how some of that comes in.
Yeah, so, um, that total is, is not accurate. Um, we have about fourteen thousand dollars to date that have come in through donations.
Right.
It's, we tend to, we do, um, some little, uh, marketing in terms of, you know, this is a nice time to think about your library, particularly at the end of the year when people are looking for tax receipts. So we tend to get more, uh, some more money towards the end of the year as well. And then the Friends are continuing to fundraise on our behalf, and they are transferring that money to us as it comes in, into their various fundraisers. So, um, you know, we know there, there's probably another four thousand dollars coming shortly from Friends of the Library.
Okay.
For, for the designated project, but, yeah.
Okay, so you're feeling comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah. Thank you for that. Um, also, um, I, I saw that, you know, you've got, uh, I think you drew fourteen thousand two hundred in reserves. Was that for the, the website? Was that what was happening there for twenty twenty-five?
Uh, yes, we will be, we'll be using, uh, some of our reserves to, um, to pay for the, the website. The original plan and, and estimate was, uh, we were given that, and that number was given and provided in the budget, but we, um, have an opportunity to do something much bigger and better, um, but it does cost more. And so we will be using, um, arranging with the Director of Finance to use some of our reserve to offset the total cost in twenty twenty-five. And in terms of twenty twenty-six, the reserve, um, uh, designation is, is for electronic resources.
Yeah, okay.
Things, yes, things like.
Yeah.
That I mentioned down, so.
Yeah.
Down the street, yeah.
Okay, and, um, uh, Director Baxter, I think you're on the call, um, could you give us a, just maybe walk us through, or maybe, maybe me, everyone else may already know this, how those reserves get pulled? Does this have to come forward to council, or is this something that they just worked through with, um, with finance? Are you able to answer that for me?
Certainly. So through the chair, so all reserves, um, are reserves of council. Um, typically, the use of reserves would get approved through the budget, um, process. Um, but in the instance where a request to use a reserve, in this case, the library reserve, um, mid-year, um, effectively, um, the board, um, would meet, um, and if they approve a request, um, to use a reserve, um, that would then come to myself, um, and then we would bring that forward to council. Um, and should council approve, um, then we would then, um, provide a transfer of those funds um, once the expenses, the corresponding expenses had been incurred.
Okay, and so we're, we're already in good shape for that, and that, or we're still waiting on that process? Where are we at on that?
If I could, if I could just speak to that, um, the, the board, uh, recesses for July and August. So they will be meeting in the month of September, and this will be an item on the agenda.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Margaret. Appreciate that. And thank you, uh, Director Baxter, for the background. Um, and so then, um, with, uh, mine's a little bit of a follow-up on some of the stuff that, uh, Counselor Adam had brought on, um. You know, we've mentioned, uh, I know a couple of times as we go through budgets about getting the library operating seven days a week, uh, year-round and so on. Is that, is that still something that we can, we can work towards, like having it, uh, open on Sundays all through the year, or is that, is that something that, that is going to take, uh, additional funds to get to?
Thanks for the question. Uh, actually, we are a seven-day-a-week operation. The Sunday hours were, um, initially introduced, uh, just before COVID, and then, um, things closed down for quite some time, as, as we're all aware. So we have, uh, brought back Sunday hours, but we typically run something similar to the school year, September to June, because that's when the greatest demand for Sunday hours is. Um, and then we would not be offering Sunday hours, um, for those few months. We also, uh, we have regular Saturday hours. However, for June, July, and August, we do have summer, uh, a reduced summer schedule, but, um, back to full hours as of this Saturday. So in essence, we are a seven-day-a-week operation at the Mary J Benson Branch.
Right, just not year-round.
Yeah, so it would just be the Sundays essentially that are effective.
Okay, and any interest from the board? Uh, Bob, on, on bringing us to year-round seven days, or, or is that not a, an interest of the board?
It, it, yes, it's of interest to the board to, to provide the, the services that the municipality needs. So we, we constantly look at our hours of operation and the traffic that we have, uh, through the site. So we, we look at metrics every single meeting. Okay. So if, if it's a need, we will certainly address it.
Okay. Um, perfect. Okay, so on the topic of metrics, uh, because I, I love a good metric, um. Do we know the extent to which the electronic resources are being used? And, and the upswing on that, I was looking for that in the presentation and, and some of the metrics, but I think I saw it.
I can forward the, that information to you, Counselor Attridge. Um, I can say with some certainty that certainly, um, growing, it's does, uh, we, we still primarily circulate print materials, but we have a lot of people who access them, um, remotely from home, people who come in and use our free Wi-Fi, use them. So we do keep, um, statistics, so we can provide some information on that, uh, topic for you.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, I, I would be curious as to, um, what we're looking at, uh, investment versus use on, uh, on the print versus the electronic, um, to see how that's, uh, planning out. Um, so thank you for that. And I got one last question, um, which is, um, when we're looking at, um, increasing things along the electronic resources and phones and website and, and so on, um, are there base costs that are impacted with these changes in technology that we need to be looking at? Um, I'll give an example on the eBooks, like, do we have to pay a license on it versus, you know, um, having physical eBooks or, uh, and then also what's the carryover and the increase in technology on, on a, an annual basis? Uh, what can we look forward to in that? Uh, because I know you had some phones in there as well. Have we looked at the numbers on that yet?
Um, so, uh, maybe I'll just address the electronic resources. So you're quite right, this is a, an expensive resource, more expensive than, than buying a book, but you get multiple uses and there are lots of, uh, other advantages in terms of access, uh, utilizing those resources. A, a library of our size couldn't afford to, uh, actually buy these resources be- because of the licensing fees. And that's a, that's a discussion within the publishing industry, um, with respect to what libraries are charged for licensing. So for, for a Porto Public Library, it, it's economically wise for us to belong to provincial consortium. And we do that, so we pool our money, we, there's a, a base rate which we pay each year, we contribute, we contribute that, it's all pooled, and then selections are made. Access is to anyone who lives in Ontario, belongs to the consortium, and therefore we can provide a wider range of resources to our, to the people who live in Port Hope. So we do that for, um, uh, all our electronic resources at the, at the moment. So it belongs to three different consortia that allow us to get some cost savings and, and still provide a, a reasonable level of service. In terms of the phones, um, were you looking for a specific?
No, I just, you know, I'm, I, I guess I become more and more aware of as we add technology, and I, and I'm with you on technology. I think we need to have it with, you know, the websites and the phones and so on, and, and there's installation costs, um, to be able to put all that in. I'm just wondering, you know, what are the ongoing carrying costs of, of all the technology that keeps getting added? Whether that's in the licenses, the electronic resources, or, you know, there'll be obviously an annual, uh, fee for phones. Um, the upkeep for the website, it is, I'm just wondering if, if we're seeing a a base balloon there, and, and not expecting you to have the answer today, Margaret. I'm just curious, maybe as we, uh, we move forward, um, how much of the, the base we're actually expanding as we, uh, as we go forward, uh, for the annual budget?
Um, I, I would agree that the, the cost of providing all of these services or utilizing the services is growing and is becoming, will command a larger part of the budget. Um, but with respect to return on investment, I can certainly get you some numbers that might be useful to you.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Not expecting the numbers today, but just, I think maybe as we go into our, um, our updates, um, maybe that's something that can come forward is just, you know, I'm, I'm conscious of the fact that, um, you know, as we acquire more software as services and as we acquire more technology, operating costs can start swelling as well. So I just want to make sure that we're conscious of that and, and aware of where we're going to be, so.
And this might be, uh, an opportunity for, um, all the services in the municipality to, to have that look and have a discussion to see if there's some broader savings to be found.
I think it's a great idea. Uh, thank you. That's it for me. Thank you for, uh, for indulging me there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for your questions. Todd, and, uh, I see the Deputy Mayor's got her hand up.
Thank you. So, um, well, thank you, thank you for the presentation. My question isn't actually for the library board, it's just a, a question maybe for Todd and the rest of council. Um, Counselor Todd, you had mentioned before as well about weekend hours, um, and asking if the board has an interest, but I think that question is more from the board to council. Are you hearing from the community that they want more weekend hours? Um, I haven't heard that, but I think that's something that the board would want to know from yourself, for example, if that, that is a demand. Um, as well as, um, is there demand for other services such as drop-off locations for books? Um, potential vending machine, um, uh, as an option to take out books and, and high-volume locations and stuff. So I think those are questions that, that, that we would need to tell the board, and, and I'm curious from yourself, Todd, you've mentioned it a few times. Is that something that you've heard from residents?
Yeah, um, thanks for the question. Um, yeah, I, I have, and, and, you know, like, I want to be realistic about this. I'm not a surveying en masse, so, you know, you, you hear, you hear from people saying, you know, I wish the library was open, uh, you know, on Sundays or over the weekend and, and the summer, but, you know, my, my sample set's too small to to act upon. So I think Bob's answer was the right one, which is if there's a need, you know, we'll, we'll act on it. Um, it'll be over to the board to, uh, determine how they figure out that need. You know, with the rest of the municipality, when we are looking into things, we often do mass surveys and so on. Um, so, you know, that I would think is the only way in which we're going to truly find out whether or not we need to be able to, to add into that, so. Take my anecdotal, uh, curiosity as, as for what it is, and I wouldn't recommend council start, you know, adding budget to Sundays, because Counselor Todd heard from someone that they want to go to the library on Sunday. Uh, instead, I would just raise it with, uh, you know, the library board as I did. You know, if, if, if there is a need, how are we discovering it? Um, and, and oftentimes we have to go seek it.
And if I could just add a comment here, um, that part of the review that will happen next year is, is a community survey. Um, and we would, certainly hours are always, uh, uh, an item of great interest for everyone and board, staff, and the public. So we certainly, uh, put on Sunday hours.
Mm-hmm. Wonderful, thank you.
If I could add just quickly, if we, the board would really appreciate any feedback that, that you as counselors do get from the community that we could, so that we're aware of concerns that they may have.
Counselor Todd, is that, is that the last of your, of your questions? Smile, saying yes, or you're.
Uh, yeah, I think we had already moved on to, uh, Deputy Mayor, uh, Ming, so, yeah.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't anything that was a follow-up from this discussion with Counselor Ming that you wanted to. Okay, so, um, Deputy Mayor, is there anything else that you wanted to add to this conversation? Okay, uh, any, any other questions before? I'm, I'm going to ask a, a few. Oh, do you mind, um, Counselor Adam, if I? So I, I, I just have, um, not, not as long of a list as, as my colleagues, but, uh, the first is around the, the Friends of the Library. Um, Bob, you had talked about, um, some of the fundraising, uh, activities, and, and Margaret, you had mentioned, uh, some of the funds that you were expecting to come in. Um, has, has, have, have the Friends ever set yearly targets for fundraising for the library? So that's, that's, uh, and I'll just put all my questions out, because I, I think they're fairly easy to, to answer, so that's the first question. Um, and the second question is, uh, and this may be touching a little bit on, on Todd's, uh, last question, Counselor Todd's last question, and also just in terms of the number of part-time positions. Has there ever been a, any contemplation of using volunteers in the library as, as a, as a model for providing some of the programming and services, or some of the, um, the person power at, at slower times in, in the library? Just a, just a thought that I, I wanted to ask you, and then I have a third question, but I'll wait for the answer for the first two. Um, I, I can speak, Bob, um, to these.
Go ahead, Margaret.
Uh, um, the Friends of the Library, uh, we have a, a small but a very, um, dedicated and hard-working group, so they're always looking for new members, um, to their organization. It's, it's voluntary, of course. So uh, I think at this point, they tend to look at the project base, so they think of things that they would like to do within the year. Some of those relate to fundraising, that's one of their purposes. It's not the only one they to, um, um, advocacy and to support. And so, um, I think, Madam Mayor, that touches on your question about volunteers. So we actually are, um, with library staff, looking at ways in which the Friends, AKA volunteers, can help us at the library. Things that they are interested in doing, that, and can commit particular time to assist, and programming is one area where not necessarily developing it, but helping us roll it out and, and implementing, um, programming. So that's one area where, um, volunteers could be useful to Porto Public Library and other libraries as well. Um, the fundraising, uh, I think that they're finding their way with respect to fundraising and how to be very effective. Uh, and partly is because they're small in number and have a small voice, but we are, um, providing through our, our news, um, updated newsletter and the website, an opportunity for them to actually have space where they can share information with the community. So it's, it's a small start, but it's something that will help them along the way. I, I don't know, Bob, do you have anything else you'd like to add? I don't know, Bob, do you have anything else you'd like to add on the fundraising piece?
No, I I think you're you're right. The Friends have done sort of project based. The the recent goal of the $20,000 that they set for the which went to the children's area was was a target that they had set for us, but more based on on the activity. And there's also several activities that the Friends do that are more drawing attention to the to the library as opposed to being particularly a fundraising event. With regard to volunteers, we we have looked at that and possibly use volunteers in the future. I I must acknowledge that the Friends provided a tremendous number of volunteer hours during COVID to help us monitoring at the at the door of people in and out of the the library. So we have used the volunteers before.
And I and I I just want to follow up with that saying that I am I am aware that Coburg has a program for youth volunteers and for students. And they actually get volunteer hours for doing activities throughout the library. And I'm wondering if that's something that could be looked at for Port Hope Library because we are moving towards being a community that is very youth focused and youth engaged and might be something to to look at. And then my my final question is, going back to the hub, as I understand it, you're saying that the budget for the hub would be $42,000 a year with four months of closure? I I just like to compare that with what it would cost to keep the hub open for all 12 months of the year until we have an opportunity to do a really fulsome community, not just a survey, but a fulsome community engagement with our constituents to find out what their wishes are for our library services throughout our municipality, including Canton Hub.
I can speak to your first question, Madam Mayor, volunteers. We actually have the same program in place at Porto Public Library. So we have students who are running their community service hours, who work, do odd, we'll call them odd jobs around the library, sort of on a regular basis. So we are using our youth in that way and supporting them. And with
Can I can I just pause and ask, how many youth do you have currently doing these kinds of volunteer hours? Just just so that we have a good sense of how active the program is.
I I think it varies. Our library services manager oversees that part of the program. So I would have to get actual numbers from her. But I think quite regularly, you could have one or two, you know, through a semester or maybe three or four. It it just depends. But I can confirm that number if you if you'd like. But but we do, we're always open to that opportunity and invite young people, whether they use the library or not, to to come and spend some time with us and explore. We give them a little time to see what it is they do, to see if it's a good fit for them and for us. And then we go for it, go forward from there.
Wonderful. Well, it'd be great if we could just get some numbers around that. I think that would be very helpful for the for the last year.
And the hub is in itself is certainly a big topic for discussion. I think one of the, this was an idea that came from staff, but also as part of the review of that's has just wound up now, but the board will be looking at the the data that was collected. That those are the months when it's very quiet at the hub, where we we don't see a lot of activity, even though we provide programming. Never open, you know, evening, Saturday mornings and that sort of thing. So those were the, that was one of the primary reasons to select those hours. Whereas, and we could really, if we compress the year into eight months instead of 12, then we could do what we do well, but also try some new things with the community. So we have had some input from the community and it will give us an opportunity to have additional input or conversations about what what they need, where they want to see services, how they want them to be delivered. Because and and I guess from a practical point of view, it, you know, our resources, our human resources there, when we're not terribly busy and the work is done, you know, there's there's sort of a gap there. So we we considered that as well.
So just going back to my original question, what would be the the budget to keep it open 12 months a year as opposed to four months of closure?
Well, while looking at the budget document, the part time salaries in 2025, $41,000. And then what's proposed with eight months is $27,700.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from Counselor Ad? Counselor Adam, I saw that you did have your hand up again, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. I appreciate. So as you're probably seeing, there's a little bit of a trend. There's a lot of questions because budget is very important to all of us as we are. These are taxpayers' money, right? And and we and currently you have a budget of $1,143,760, which is substantial. What is that? An increase of 7.4%? And that is with a reduction of service currently with the the Ken Hub kind of reducing, right? So it's a very difficult thing because we are I I know myself at least, I don't know, I I don't want to speak for everybody, but myself at least, looking at trying to bring these budgets down substantially. So I do have one quick question that I'm going to go back over to. And it was in regards with the eBooks and then the the paper books. And the budget of the paper books seems to continually grow, but so does the eBooks. Have you thought about reducing the paper books? I don't know if they're being used enough. Like, is there a need for $60,000 in books every year?
Books are the mainstay of the public library. It's the highest circulating item in the library system. So more people are taking out print materials than they are using eresources. Eresource is is an alternative. It provides a different level of a resource for people. So many people use both. Some use one or one or the other. In in terms of increases, materials continue to go up in price. We also have to replace books. So books don't last forever. So we have to remove them from the collection. And there are some titles, not all, that we we need to replace. So we need money, additional money to for replacements in as well as the new books that are being published. And those are the ones that most people want to read. Okay.
Well, thank you. I appreciate. I did just want to bring up the fact that budget is a very tight thing. And it is something that we are scrutinized quite a bit about with the with the community. So a very important thing. So I just wanted to to throw that out there to let you know why so many questions coming from.
No, we appreciate the questions. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, thank you, guys. Appreciate. Take care.
Okay, so if there aren't any more questions or comments from the council table, the recommended motion is for us to receive this presentation for information. So can I ask for a mover and seconder on this? Moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor Claire. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much. And thank you to Bob and Margaret for the presentation and for answering all the questions that we have for you this evening.
Thank you so much for your time today.
Yep, our pleasure. Thank you.
So at this point, it is 7:50 PM and we are going to have a 10 minute recess. Okay, we will be continuing on with with the meeting. We had ended with item 4.1. So now we are moving on to item 4.2, which is staff presentation and report FS0625, Repposed Levels of Service Asset Management Plan. So I'm going to ask staff to unmute and speak to this to this presentation and to the plan and the report. And I just want to start off by acknowledging how much time and effort has gone into this and how much we appreciate the the robust nature of the plan that we have received for our reading. It's it's like a telephone book, but great details and a lot of information. So just want to acknowledge and and thank you, Jeremy, for that. And we look forward to your presentation today.
About a mayor? It was very much a group effort on behalf of most of us in the finance, on the finance team. I will begin by sharing my screen here. Make sure I'm sharing the right screen. Can you see my slides?
Not yet, but there could be just a bit of a delay. There we go.
Okay, so as you mentioned, I'm happy to be here in front of you all once again. I'm very happy to to let you all know that our finalized asset management plan has been has been completed. And we'll be discussing today the proposed levels of service. We're going to be going over the asset management timeline. We're going to be discussing what's new, what's new within this report, as well as some some improvements and innovations that we've made within the asset management within our asset management system as a whole. We're going to be discussing the state of infrastructure. That section is quite quite lengthy. There are some repeating slides for a variety of different asset classes. So I'm going to try and kind of get through that section relatively quickly in the interest of time. All that information is still included within the report. And I can be free for any questions afterwards as well. And we're going to be discussing our financial strategies, proposed levels of service, and what's next for asset management. So most of you are probably aware of the journey that we've been on for the last 13 years, myself only for the last couple. In 2012, it began when the province published Building Together Guide for Municipal Asset Management Plans. 2013, council first approved their first asset management plan, which included all assets. 2016, there was another asset management plan produced. And 2020, there was the hiring of the asset manager and GIS coordinator. In 2019, sorry, I went the wrong direction. In 2018, the Ontario Province of Ontario passed Ontario Regulation 58817, Asset Management Planning for Municipal Infrastructure. In 2019, a council approved the Strategic Asset Management Policy. In 2020, development and higher hiring of the asset management and GIS coordinator staff position. 2022, a report regarding the current levels of service for core infrastructure were approved by council. And also included a review of the Strategic Asset Management Policy. In 2024, municipalities approved asset management plans for all 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 municipal assets. In 2025, we are expanding this to an asset management plan for proposed levels of service and 10 year financial planning to to achieve long term financial sustainability within the municipality. And with the approval of this asset management plan, the municipality will be in compliance with all milestones within Ontario Regulation 58817. So what's new? I just want to cover off the differences quickly between last year's asset management plan and the asset management plan that we're producing here today. Previous year, we only touched on the non-core infrastructure, so facilities, fleet, land improvements, and machinery and equipment. This focused on the basics of an asset management plan, the replacement costs, condition assessments, lifecycle projections, and the current levels of service for each of the of the of the asset classes and asset segments. In 2025, things are a little bit different. This includes all capitalized assets, so it's core and non-core. So there'll be eight, nine, sorry, there are nine individual classes that we're going to be discussing today. And this is focused on lifecycle management strategies. We're going to be discussing the proposed levels of service, risk analysis, and financial forecasting. Before we get into the nitty gritty of what is included within the report, I wanted to touch on some of the some of the changes, some of the innovations that we've brought to our asset management plan and within our asset management system. I want to highlight this because it took our team quite a bit of time to go through this and refine it. One of the one of the issues that we noticed early on in the year was that the way we were calculating risk wasn't exactly correct. Wasn't, sorry, it wasn't exactly the most refined that it could have been. And one of the first changes that we made was essentially when we're discussing the financial, the financial consequence of failure. Assets were put into one of five buckets, and that's based on the dollar range. So you can see here within the the first, this is our previous methodology here. So a level one would be less than 10,000, then 10 to 25, 25 to 50, 50 to 100, and then 100,000 plus. Problem with this was that the vast majority of our assets were included in that bucket number five. And that wasn't, that's not the way that it should have been. Where not all assets were were considered that financially critical to the municipality based on their replacement cost. So based on some recommendations that we found from the MFOA, some best practice guidelines that they produced, we changed that range to the below, which had a pretty significant alteration to the way our assets were distributed between these buckets. This is what it looked like previously, the the chart in blue. We're seeing 88% of our assets were considered highly critical from a financial perspective. And then, once we made the changes, you can see here at the bottom, the bottom, this is a much more equitable distribution of assets, criticality from a financial perspective. Where you can see here, there's roughly around 88% are within three, three to five. But we have a significant more percentage of assets that are within the the lower brackets here as well. So roughly 32% of our assets are within three to one, whereas before we had about six. So in a different life, I worked for a chocolate manufacturer that will remain nameless as a market analyst. And they referred to this type of situation as as right sizing the business. They would they would decrease the size, increase the cost, try to get a better understanding of this. I like to use that terminology a little bit different in this case because what we're looking at here is is essentially right sizing our infrastructure gap and looking at our infrastructure gap, infrastructure gap from a more critical, critical level. Looking at assets from a critical perspective instead of that big gray bar that we're used to seeing in in the in the finance charts. This provides us with a better opportunity to look at things more critically. The second change that we did was realigning our condition ranges. So in the previous condition range here, that you can see from three to or three to to five was roughly 60% of the range. So roughly a significant amount, 48%, of our assets would have been considered in the fair or worse category. We realigned it to be a series of one or 25% increments with five being absolute deteriorated product or deteriorated asset. Excuse me. And when we get to that number five, that 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 five, we know that that asset is critically and critically in danger of failing. It needs to be replaced. So we wanted to keep that zero as as a whole. So you can see here, again, the change here is pretty drastic. We're seeing 48% of assets in fair or worse previously, moving that over to 39% of assets in fair or worse. So this, again, this is looking at things a little bit more critically, realigning and providing a better look of the risk related to our assets. Probably the most significant change that we we applied to our our asset profiles is the fact that within the consequence of failure, we didn't have an overall strategic weight. It was generally for the for the majority of assets, it was all based on the financial implication of that asset failing. That from a strategic perspective isn't correct because we're not taking into account the criticality of the asset. So what we did was we created or we used an MF, MFOA Best Demonstrated Practice Guideline. And what this is, is it's a multi decision or multi criteria decision model, allowing us to look at each asset profile or asset segment and determine within five or six different categories, strategic, environmental, health and safety, compliance, operational, as well as financial, where they align within this matrix. And what that allowed us to do was, again, look, apply this criticality to our infrastructure to say from within each asset profile where each one of the, each one of these categories lands. And this allowed us, again, to look at things a little bit more critically. And sorry, to, to recap it, all of the changes that happened here, I want to show you a couple of charts. Oh, excuse me, uh, asset risk is calculated by multiplying, uh, probability times consequence, and they're both a one to five rating. So that gives you a number out of twenty-five. And what I have here in the top chart is all of the assets that would be considered, um, critical within the individual buckets of one to twenty-five. Okay? When we made that change, all the changes we listed above, you can see significantly less assets within the, within the highly critical fifteen-plus range, more within the less critical range. And what you're seeing here with the green, with the green bars, that same information, but in a dollar ramp. So what you would want to see in this case is a more curved ramp. You want to see it go up faster and smoother at the top. And what you don't want to see is a more linear angular bar, because that means that the ramp is steadily going up. You have more assets within that higher range. So the ultimate change that we saw here is us going from a more, the municipality going from a more angular to a more curved ramp. So the changes that we proposed, the changes that we implemented did work. There's an example of one of the assets that, uh, that we can, we can show you on a more, um, granular level. Well, one asset in particular is the Garden Hill Baseball Diamond. I'm not going to get into the math at the bottom of the, of bottom of the table. Um, but what, in, in the previous version of how we were calculating risk, that Garden Hill Baseball Diamond was considered a twenty in terms of risk, very high. After the changes that we made, that same ball diamond was now considered a six. I love baseball. I don't think in any world that a, a baseball diamond should be considered a, a twenty in terms of our risk. A six is much more, much more realistic in terms of its, its criticality to the municipality. So now we're going to talk about state of infrastructure and this is more of the, um, the nitty-gritty, more of the, how all of our assets are doing on a category level. But before we get into that, I'm going to talk about some key statistics. I believe this is page one, like one of the first initial pages of the report, if you want to, if you want to review it further. Um, the overall replacement cost of our entire asset portfolio, sorry, the municipality's entire asset portfolio is nine hundred and eighty-five point six million dollars. The overall profile condition is fifty-five, and that's based on, that's weighted based on the replacement cost of the assets. Eighty-two percent of our assets are rated fair or better, and there is a bit of a caveat to that, which I'll get into in a moment. Um, fifty-three percent of our assets have assessed condition data. So the majority, or not the majority, roughly half of our, of our, of our assets are uh, have their condition based on the remaining useful life of the asset, not a, not a, uh, condition assessment, which is something that we'll be focused on in the future. Currently, we're looking at roughly a twelve million dollar annual capital infrastructure deficit. Excuse me, um, based on the findings within the asset management plan. Uh, a tax increase annually for twenty years of one point four percent will receive, will in, in ensure a fully funded proposed levels of service in twenty years. I want to point out that that number does not include inflation, that is in today's dollars. It would be the same, the, the asset management plan also recommends a water rate increase of the same value over twenty years to fully fund the proposed levels of service in that category. Then the wastewater or sanitary department would be roughly one point two percent per year over twenty years to be fully funded. Again, these are in today's dollars. The minus, or the, uh, the asset management plan did not include inflation within its calculations. However, internally we did, which we'll get to in a couple of slides. So I'm going to keep these slides fairly brief because there is about nine of them. Um, but what I want to touch on is the, um, essentially, this is the road network, primarily consisting of, of our HCB and LCB roads. Um, for the layperson, HCB would be our, um, our roads within the urban area predominantly. And LCB would be road, uh, roads in our urban area predominantly. The overall asset profile, um, has an overall condition of sixty, sixty-three. Um, sorry, my notes are covered. With roughly ninety-four percent of our assets in fair, better condition. One of the caveats I want to point out with regards to when we're talking about fair or better is that fair goes down to forty percent. Anything below that is poor, and then there's one percentage which really isn't, um, uh, visualized well here as one percent is very poor. Bridges and culverts are in, uh, good condition with an average rating of sixty-seven. Um, as you can see, the majority of the, uh, the majority of the dollars within this category are within our bridges and culverts. Um, ninety-nine percent of them are in fair, better condition. This is one of our better asset classes at the moment, um, which is a good thing because bridges are very expensive. So. Uh, within, uh, the drinking water department, uh, the average assets are within the, are around forty-two percent. I want to point out one thing. When we were talking about, previously about the matrix that we put in for, to develop the criticality of infrastructure, the end result was that the water mains were the most critical infrastructure to the municipality. Um, and within this particular, um, asset class, water mains are the lion's share of the replacement cost value with, uh, facilities coming in second. Um, average condition again being forty-two, which is still considered fair. Um, and the overall, uh, overall seventy-five percent of the assets are in fair and better condition. Within the wastewater department, again, it's the same value at the average condition is forty-two, which is considered fair. Um, the majority of the assets again are in the same, the same, um, split, essentially the sanitary mains and the sanitary facilities are the lion's share. Um, however, there's slightly, a slight more deterioration hap, has happened in this asset class where sixty percent of the assets within the wastewater department are, um, in, uh, fair or better condition. From a stormwater perspective, uh, as you can imagine, storm conduits are predominantly the, the main, uh, source of, uh, replacement costs in this particular asset class. Um, the, the infrastructure is, uh, again, considered good, fifty-four percent. And eighty-seven percent of the assets within the class are within fair or better condition. The stormwater infrastructure is an interesting one for us moving forward because we currently don't have a completed CCTV inspection for this particular asset class. We have, uh, we have done sections of it over the last few years, but we haven't done a complete assessment of it. And that information has yet to enter into citywide. So the asset condition that you're seeing here overall is based on estimated useful life and not on assessed condition from a CCTV inspection. From a facilities perspective, uh, our facilities, municipalities' facilities are in fairly good condition, uh, good condition rather, um, at sixty-nine percent overall. Um, this is based on the replacement cost. Um, this is, uh, the, the spread of assets within this category is a little bit more diverse where, uh, recreation is the predominant one, followed up by emergency services and then general government. Um, interestingly, ninety-nine percent of the assets in this class are considered in fair or better condition. We are expanding the use of, uh, facility condition assessments within this class, which is an excellent thing in my perspective. We will have, uh, we've done seven, I believe, um, facilities this year with, and we'll be expanding again, uh, in the future. Land improvements is the most diverse, um, is one of the most diverse asset classes that the municipality has, is predominantly made up of parking lots and sports arenas or sports areas. This particular asset class is in the best shape of all the municipality's asset classes at seventy-two percent. Um, and ninety-four percent of the assets in this class are in fair or better condition. And the, I believe this is the last asset class machinery and equipment. Sorry, there's one more. Uh, machinery and equipment is by far the most diverse asset class we have within the municipality. It, uh, accounts for everything from servers, firewalls, laboratory equipment, fire safety equipment. Um, it is a very diverse asset grouping. Um, unfortunately, this particular asset class is in the worst shape of all of the asset classes within the asset management plan. With an overall, uh, asset condition of forty-one and fifty-nine percent of the assets are in fair or better condition. Lastly, we have fleet and fleet equipment. This asset class is, um, predominantly, um, most of the assets in, within this class are, from a replacement cost value are within, excuse me, the emergency services, uh, section, um, and this does not include police. This is predominantly, um, uh, fire. And this asset class is in fair condition with an average overall score of forty-nine and has seventy-six percent of the assets are in fair, better condition. Okay, I recognize that was a lot of information at once, but I wanted to touch on some of the more interesting aspects of the asset management plan. Um, if you have any questions about any of this stuff, I'm happy to, to dive into it deeper, um, later on or throughout the next, next week or two while, while you're reviewing the asset management plan. Proposed levels of service, pardon me?
Uh, no, thank, thank you for this part of the presentation. I'm, I'm wondering if, because it's such a long presentation, if, if, uh, we might pause here and just ask, uh, if council has any questions about what you've just presented in the first part, in case folks don't want to lose the thread, uh, of the, of the presentation.
Certainly.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about that, just the first part? Um, yes, uh, I'll go with councillor Todd and then with councillor Adam.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate, uh, taking the, the break in there to ask some of those questions. Um, Jeremy, this is great and I'm, I'm really geeking out on, on the data on this. I think it's really interesting. Um, when we talk about things that are very poor, criticalities and so on, is there, is there a timeframe that's, that intersects with some of this, like, hey, this stuff is imminent, it's got to get replaced and this stuff is, you know, like it's, it's very poor, but, you know, like, how do those two intersect in all of this?
Great question. Um, yes, something we're going to be touching on in a few slides. Um, there are certain ways that we can look at that within our, our asset management software. We have reports, um, that can be produced that allow us to show at the asset level per year what needs to be replaced. And this is something that we've been reviewing in development of the capital, um, capital budget this, in this year.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Adam.
Thank you. And I realize that we're going to be touching on this a little bit later, but, uh, I just wanted to, um, clarify, just wanted to make sure. On the, um, suggested increases of the one point four percent per year for the next twenty years to catch up that type of deal. Is that, uh, is that like, whatever the dollar amount is right now, is that one point four, um, a static that amount or like taxes? Is that compounding that every year for the next twenty years, that one point four would be a little bit larger every year too?
It would be, and it is taken into account for that. So it's not, it's not one point four every year. It would be a one point four percent increase to the total tax base per year for twenty years.
Thank you. Just one for clarification. Thank you.
Of course.
And, uh, deputy mayor had her hand up as well? Thank you. No, I think my question's going to come a little later, so I'll just hold off. Thank you for the opportunity for the pause, Jeremy, and we can continue on now.
No problem at all. We can do that at the end of each one of these segments if you'd prefer, so we can have an opportunity to, you know, keep the topics, uh, the questions topical. So proposed levels of service, um, this isn't, it, it, I wanted to keep this particular section a little bit more, um, high level. I didn't want to get into the individual proposed levels of service for every single segment because they are included in the plan. Um, and it would take us a while to go through them all. I wanted to touch on what a proposed levels of service, what a proposed level of service is. Um, and that is essentially, uh, it is an average condition for an asset segment. Um, each asset category has multiple asset segments. When the target condition is set, is set, um, it triggers asset replacement when the overall asset condition of that segment drops below that threshold. So if we have set our average condition threshold to be fifty-five, the asset or the asset class won't trigger a replacement of any assets within that class until it drops below that, regardless of estimated useful life of the assets. The goal is to keep the overall, um, the overall level of, of target level of service at its, uh, at that level. Um, one of the reasons why, I'd like to touch on the reason why, uh, our asset management plan didn't come through on July first, it was planned to. One of the reasons it didn't was because we decided to, to make some innovations. We wanted to do things a little bit differently than the way that everybody else is doing them. And the way that we decided to do that was to not base our proposed levels of service on the current levels of service. Because the inherent flaw in that is that assumes that everything that we're doing now was the correct thing to do. And if that were the case, asset management planning wouldn't be a thing. So what we did was we, as we discussed before with the criticality of infrastructure based on risk profile, we decided to set the proposed levels of service based on the criticality of the assets to the, to the, to the municipality. Um, and what we've done is we've also added an upper and lower threshold to that limit. Upper being sixty-five and lower being forty, to ensure that assets, um, that would be significantly, um, important to the, uh, to the municipality, wouldn't be over-serviced. And assets that would be, uh, that are, have a relatively low criticality, wouldn't be underserved. So I'll give you an example of what, um, our, um, consequence of failure matrix looks like in, in, as from an operational perspective. Um, so this is for our most critical infrastructure to the municipality, which was considered the water mains. Um, so this has three different weights to it. One being the economic weight, which, which suggests, um, the overall replacement cost of that asset. Um, the operational weight, which is the, uh, pipe size in diameter. As, and then finally, the strategic weight, which we've recently adopted, which has it, um, which is a one to five as well, which in this case, considered it, um, critical or severe. These are then, um, added together. The economic weight is twenty-five percent. The operational weight is twenty-five percent and the strategic weight is, is fifty percent. So the majority of the, the majority of the, uh, consequence is coming from the criticality of the infrastructure. Give you an example of where certain asset segments are within this particular range, these particular ranges. Um, starting at forty-five, we have parking lots, parkland, trails and pathways, furniture and fixtures. At fifty, we have telecommunit, or, uh, technology and communication equipment and retaining walls. At sixty, we have all facilities. Um, facility equipment, fuel storage tanks and outdoor lighting. And at sixty-five, we have HCB and LCB roads, bridges and culverts, fire equipment and fleet and emergency service vehicles. That's sort of the end of the proposed levels of service section. Do we have any overall questions that we'd like to chat about right now?
I'll turn it over to council. Does anybody have any questions or comments at this point? Seeing none, I think Jeremy, you can continue, please.
Perfect. Thank you. So to discuss the financial strategy, um, I wanted to provide you with a slide from a asset category level, which shows the total annual requirements based on replacement costs and estimated useful life. Um, as well as a view of our actual reinvestment rate. So we won't need to get, we don't need to go through each individual one of these, but I think you can see from um, a high level, you can see how funded and underfunded certain categories are. Uh, if we look at the total annual requirement of roughly nineteen point nine five million dollars per year and the total average reinvestment rate of, uh, seven point nine six. And the total average reinvestment rate of seven point nine six, it leaves us with roughly a deficit of of eleven point nine nine million dollars. This this slide just gives you an idea of how that's broken down by asset class or asset category. I think to Counselor Todd's question before, if there are any timelines to this. There are a couple of ways of looking at it. One is to look at the year over year requirements, and there's also a a view of of the backlog. Which we're not going to be getting into today, but there is information within the asset management plan if you'd like to discuss that further. Meeting our average annual requirement isn't always about the immediate need on a year to year basis. It's about ensuring that we're we're putting money towards in in reserves or funds. That can be available in future years for when those when those. Requirements come up. So this particular slide is a view of the annual requirement per asset category. On five year rolling segments, rolling timelines. So between twenty twenty five and twenty twenty nine, we're going to have an annual asset requirement roughly sixty point sixty two point one million dollars. And you can see it trends down in the next group of five or the next the next five years after that. But as we get towards. Twenty fifty five to twenty fifty nine, we're looking at nearly a two hundred and seven million dollar requirement. It's really important to note this so that we can be planning for the future. Because I really, I really want to make an important note that, you know, again, it's not just about funding today, it's about funding the future as well. With regards to the recommendations that were provided within the 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 first slide of the state of infrastructure, I wanted to discuss. How, what that looked like and what some of the options were within the asset management plan. Based on the findings within this asset management plan, the average annual rate increase dedicated to capital infrastructure of one point four percent per year. Suggests full funding by in twenty years. There are other options that can go longer or shorter as well. In a five year plan with five point six percent per year, we it can be fully funded in five years for non rate. For water, this, sorry, it's broken down by non rate funded categories. The water network and the sanitary network separately. So you can see there are several different options here from timeline perspective that are included in the asset management plan. I believe the longest term within the plan itself is twenty years. I'd also like to to note again. That the the asset management plan with the recommendations that were provided by our consultant did not include inflation. This is in today's dollars. Internally, we calculated things a little bit differently. Based on the average inflation rate over the last five or over the last ten years. Based on the non residential, sorry, non residential building consumer price index. The average inflation rate over the last ten years was five point five percent, heavily skewed towards the last few years during the our COVID run. We included that five point five percent in our calculations. And what we netted out with was a two percent increase annually dedicated to capital infrastructure. Would ensure eighty percent funded asset management plan in seventeen years. Currently, we have an average annual reinvestment requirement of thirteen point seven six. Roughly. And a capital expenditure of that, sorry, this doesn't include rate funded of four point three million dollars. Which assumes that we have an an asset management plan that is currently thirty one percent funded. The chart below shows. The capital levy. Per year. And then the percent in percent funded, so roughly around eighty percent is in the in your year seventeen. And this, again, this does include inflation. I'd like to present this slide, which is presented multiple times a year, but I think it's a very important slide for us to continue to cover off. For those that have not seen the slide, I'll explain what it looks like. This gray area here is the total funding requirement for the municipality year over year. The orange area here is the total rate of inflation. Over year over year from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty six. The blue bars represent. The. Sorry, the the levy applied to capital infrastructure. I wanted to add in this little green bar here. Because this represents the two percent, two percent represents roughly eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of additional capital infrastructure funding. And if we were to apply that within twenty twenty six, we would nearly be caught up with the inflation that we've seen since twenty seventeen. This would move the municipality's funded percentage, increase it by five point five percent to thirty six point eight percent. Without it, without that, due to our estimated inflation values, it would decrease our funding percentage by point six percent. To thirty point seven percent. I also wanted to highlight the the great work that has been done throughout this council's record. We've moved from twenty six point seven percent and increased year over year. Currently, within twenty twenty five, we're at thirty one point three. Should we go ahead with the two percent, again, we'll be at thirty six point eight. We're making good strides, we're making good efforts here. Have one slide left to present. And that is the recommendations from the asset management plan. There were more than this. I just wanted to cover off some of the more important ones, some and most of these were already on our radar before we produced the asset management plan. The first one being review the feasibility of adopting a fully funded scenario to achieve a hundred percent average annual funding requirement. Again, within the asset management plan, that recommends one point four percent over twenty years to reach a hundred percent. Again, that does not include inflation. Internally, we're recommending two percent over seventeen years to reach eighty percent. We chose eighty percent because roughly twenty percent of our capital infrastructure right now is funded through grants. Annual grants such as CCBF, OC, OCIF, and so on. The next recommendation was to periodically update replacement costs based on recent projects, invoices and estimates. This is one of the major next steps for our asset management plan, which was already on our radar prior to developing this model or this asset management plan. The next is the continued expansion of condition assessment programs. For critical asset segments. Again, this is another one that we're planning on doing on on a year, annual, biannual and. Five year basis. We already have a, we already have infrastructure set up to support that. The expanded use of componentization for facility assets within citywide. Currently, a lot of the componentized assets are grouped pooled assets within citywide. And that doesn't give us a true view of their their nature or their risk or their their timelines for replacement. So breaking those out is another critical piece of of our planning. Consciously review, refine and. And collaborate, collaboration of lifecycle profiles to better reflect actual practices to improve capital projects. This essentially is another one that we're really, really interested in 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 continuing within the future. Because we need to have a better understanding of what our asset lifecycle maintenance management practices are and include them within citywide. So that. Our capital projections are more accurate. And lastly, evaluate the efficacy of the municipality's lifecycle management strategies at regular intervals to determine. The impact, cost, condition and risk. Again, this this touches on our maintenance management practices, which we, again, we have. Infrastructure and planning set up right now to continue on with this in in years to come. That concludes the end of my presentation. I recognize that there will be some some questions specifically around natural asset management and I can take them now.
Thank you, Jeremy. I know that there's probably quite a few questions around the table, so the firsthand I saw. Go up was Counselor Claire, so we'll start there and then we'll move on to the deputy mayor.
Thank you, Marilynna, and thank you, Jeremy. I just for transparency, I did submit a series of detailed questions to Jeremy earlier on the asset management plan around climate resilient and natural assets. And he's agreed to meet before our council meeting in two weeks' time. I will say though that nothing in those questions I don't think would preclude me from supporting the plan and or the components of the plan required to meet our compliance. With the province, but depending on those discussions, I may also ask that the the asset management plan be referred to. The Environmental Advisory Committee for review and further input for future consideration. For this evening, my one question is whether approving the plan. To meet our compliance requirements, is that committing to the recommended two percent additional levy per year? And if so, what implications would that have for the standing resolution? Of council that was passed in the twenty twenty three budget deliberations, which called for a two point six percent additional levy until the infrastructure gap was closed, subject to annual review.
Excellent question. Thank you. It would not, it would not. Become a requirement for us to. Move forward with a two percent increase. It's just accepting this as a recommendation.
Thank you. Is that, was that, that was, that was it for you, Counselor Claire? Okay, moving on to Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So thank you very much for the presentation and for all the work that went into this. You said it was the whole department, but I think it was probably. Multiple departments that helped contribute probably to some extent, so congratulations. Reading through this, I actually am very excited by it, just the deck itself and all the all the information that you presented here. So I don't have any questions really about the proposals. And. The content in it, I think that will come out naturally over the next several weeks and months as we go into budget. But I had just a couple of questions. In the the big two hundred and something page document, as well as through here and through discussions. It said that this is not a long term sustainable plan that would require. Constant up updating and 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 so on as as things change. This is really a replacement only strategy. So that next step of the sustainable plan, do we have our sights on moving forward to create something like that in the near future? Or are we moving forward with this right now?
Moving forward with this right now. We don't, I believe that the. The capital, the dedicated capital increase would push us towards that sustainable future that you're referring to. I think that recommendation is, it needs to be taken into account. For the moment, we're just working with, we're just working on a replacement like for like perspective at the moment.
Thank you. So and and that sort of leads me to my second question is that when we're at the decision making table. We are, we're off, we have a number of new assets coming and we're presented with some great opportunities. So for example, we have a new fire station coming. We get great grant opportunities such as pump tracks and pickleball courts and all of these items that add to the. The database of of assets. So when we're making decisions, it sounds like a great, great opportunity at the time. But it's, it's quite often helpful to know as as the main decision maker. When is this item going to start costing the municipality and how does that fit into this long? Twenty year term, because we could be deciding, yes, you know, a pickleball court is great right now, but will it need replacing when something else is also scheduled to be replacing? So be replaced. So I I don't know if you can answer that now, but I think that is something that as a municipality we can. We can start striving for so that we're making better decisions when it's presented. But aside from that, thank you very much. I'm very excited about the future based on what was presented today.
I'm actually prepared to answer that question. It was an excellent one and something that. My colleagues Ruthie Lee had already thought about going into our capital budget process. Once we 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 went through the asset management team, she decided that she wanted to take a look at. How? If we're bringing on new assets, if we're expanding service levels, what impact is that going to have on our annual requirement? So within her her fancy budget sheet, which I'm sure you might see in the future. There is a column for that, which includes how much annually this will be adding to our our annual requirement.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, did you have another question?
No, no, I I just, just just to follow up, that that's fantastic, and I think that is something that we need to be mindful of, not just as the asset itself, but human resources to manage and so on. So the big picture of these assets, there's more to it than just. Just the number at that moment, right? So thank you very much for that forward thinking, much appreciated.
Thank you for that. Jeremy, I have a, I have a few questions to ask you as well is. One, it's, it's wonderful to always know. How we stand in relation to other municipalities of a similar size and location. So I'm just wondering. Can you give us a sense of all all those metrics are so incredibly helpful, but how do we stand? In relation to other municipalities? I know that you've stated that. That we are in a in a proactive position, so that's positive, but I'm wondering. Is it possible to get that information on how we are situated in relation to other municipalities?
Answered that question, but I can't answer that question today. I would like to have some time to review some of our our neighboring communities to see, to review their asset management plans before I can, I can, I can speak to that. One of the things I can say is that we went to the the citywide conference this year. And we, we told them of how we were planning on calculating our proposed levels of service and how we were planning on innovating in that in that area. And they were all very impressed with that notion of applying criticality to proposed levels of service. So I think from that perspective, from an innovation perspective, we are, we are, we are leading at the moment. But I can get you additional numbers on how we compare to other municipalities from an asset management perspective.
That that would be very helpful. And then the second question is, and and I'm not sure if this is so much for you, but also if the CIO wants to weigh in on this, I'm curious to know. How do we relay this information in a very clear way to our public? How do we get across? The situation in which we're in and how that relates back to the tax levy? Or the increases that we have to be seeing in some of these areas of water and sanitary? So. That's a question, not sure specifically for you, Jeremy, but I wonder if our CIO can weigh in on this as well.
Through you, Mayor. Yeah, great question. To me, the the two hundred page plus report is a very onerous report to go through. We've all gone through it, you know, the finance staff have gone through it a couple of times. So yes, it is, it is a heavy, complex document. We we can try and summarize in in some way, shape or form. We were really successful when we did the. The rural municipal tax consultants report and summarized that through the AI podcast. So I think it would be something to really try and and use our, use our innovation to try and, you know, simplify that and and percolate that down to a meaningful. Meaningful, short podcast. So I think we are ready, prepared to do that one and we will share that once it's ready.
And. Sorry. Okay, thank you for that. I I think that's a really terrific idea and it's a really important one because we always struggle to relay this. When it comes to our budget deliberations and discussions, so I I think that's terrific. And then the final question is really about the point about ensuring that we have funds, not just for now, but for the future. So. I want to to just bring counsel back to the to the fact that we we did pass a motion earlier this year about looking. At potentially different ways of investing our monies and and looking at using a vehicle. Like one investment, and I'm wondering at what stage are we at in relation to that, especially because obviously we want to make sure. That whatever money we get. Is going to be working hard for us to cover some of these expenses as as we as we really try to address all of our asset needs.
Through you, Mayor. Yeah, great, great question. I had the pleasure at the AMO conference in Ottawa. I had the pleasure at the AMO Conference in Ottawa, having conversations with the, the One Joint Investment Board Group. They are all ready to support us. I think just as we move through the budget process a little bit further along, the finance team will have a bit more capacity to, you know, to take that on. It is a fairly seamless transaction. There's a bit of work for cash flow forecasting. This asset management plan will be part of that cash flow forecasting, which is required for the One Joint Investment, as, as all our other about cash, cash balances and reserves are. So, I know Director Baxter is working hard on those reserve balances to get a good understanding. And once we get through the budget process, we will definitely be exploring that. And I can pass that off to Director Baxter if he has any further comments.
Absolutely. Well, it's, it's really about the, the capacity, and there's a few steps we need to do initially in terms of readiness. But in conversation with, with One Investment, one of the things we certainly need to do is, is the investment policy and, but I think they're going to be a great resource to be able to assist in updating that, that part as well also.
Okay, thank you. And I, I do look forward to just getting a better sense of how we're situated in relation to other municipalities, because I think that's a, a really good way to report back to our public and be accountable to them as well. Any other questions or comments from around the table that I've, that I've missed? Don't see any other hands up at the moment. Okay, well, thank you, thank you very much again, and congratulations. And, you know, really, I think you've heard from most everybody how much we've appreciated the time and the effort and the rigor that's, that's gone into this and looking forward to being in compliance with the requirements to have this report submitted. I, I do think time is of the essence, given that we are a bit delayed. And so, we, we don't want to be out of step with provincial requirements around reporting on this. So, thank you for that. So, our recommended motion is listed on the agenda. Can I get a mover and seconder? Moved by Counselor Claire, seconded by Counselor Adam, all in favor. Thank you, and that's passed. Moving on to item 4.3, Report FS 0725, re 2025 Second Quarter Financial Report. Does staff have anything further that they would like to add? Director Baxter?
Yes, I can certainly speak to, to the report. So, we're, this is at mid-year. Looking overall, we have 46.5% of the budget remaining for 50% of the year. We are well on track from a salary perspective. We have had some unplanned budget overruns, notably for flooding repairs at 81 Mill Street and some emergency repairs, as an example, to the fire truck aerial. So, we are, you know, trying to keep an eye, especially on repair and maintenance, you know, costs, as we have a, a plan and a schedule going through. And then, you know, certainly other things, you know, come up, you know, mid-year. We have, as you're aware, we, we spoke to previously, we've got the floodplain mapping project that we have grant funding needed to get on right away, but that part will be, will be over budget and will be adjusting that budget for the 2026 proposal. But overall, you know, in, in fairly good shape, as long as we, you know, maintain and do some adjustments going forward. The, the other part I wanted to just speak to with some, some good results is where we're at in terms of taxes receivable. Obviously, as we go through any current year, you know, we're, we're adding, you know, we're adding taxes. So, to get an appropriate baseline, what we do is we evaluate the taxes outstanding as of January 1st of the year, right? So, all the prior year ones, that started out at $2.8 million. And I'm happy to advise counsel that over a million dollars of that, our revenue team has been successful in collecting just in the first six months of the year. And it's not just the stuff from 2024. It is coming from all of our prior years, which is, the older the years, the harder it is, you know, on the collection side. So, really happy to be seeing, to seeing that. We do identify annually to go through the tax sale process. We start that, you know, for any properties that are at least two years in arrears. And our, our tax revenue manager makes reference in this report of having 134 property owners where we issued farm debt notices. And farm debt notices doesn't mean that they are farms. In fact, the vast majority, if not all, aren't. But it's a step legislatively that we need to go through in case you happen to own a farm anywhere else in the province, and we don't necessarily know that. But if you do, there is some relief that you can seek out to, to, to support you in that way. So, it's just a stuff we need to go through, not in this report, because this was a Q2 report, but just for interest and to come in our next report, to give you a little bit of early insight. They've got this down to 22 files from 134. So, we do often see, you know, we often do see that, that significant drop-off, but, you know, a great accomplishment nonetheless. And, and I will say, staff are very conscious of working. For those who will reach out, those who are responsive, staff do a great job. And I, I recently, it was shared with me just a, a great example, an unusual example, but a great example of that, where we've been working with someone for almost 10 years to clear up, you know, their arrears, but with them working with us for what was achievable, right? And if it wasn't achievable, instead of just not making payments, coming back to the municipality and really working with us. And, and that's really our end goal, is to work with the taxpayers, to be for those who, you know, are having some financial challenges. And, and as much as it's a difficult job, we do get some, we do often get, you know, a lot of thanks through or at the end of, of the process. And I do really appreciate the consideration that staff do give to those who will engage and have those, and have those discussions. So, that is overall where we are, are sitting at the, at the midpoint of the year and available to take any questions, but I'll turn it over to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much for this. And I'm going to just start off by saying, this is really exciting to see. And I'm just wondering, are we, are we going to be moving into a different format of updates, financial updates? Are we going to be getting updates more than just once a year? Are we going to be getting quarterly updates? Is that, is that something that this is signaling in terms of a new direction?
So, that is a great question, giving me the segue of the part I wanted to, to give some thanks to counsel is, we've been asking for a financial analyst to be able to, you know, do some of our base functions. And this is one of the things, council approved that position as part of the 2025 budget. And this is one of the things that that is going to give us capacity and enable us to be doing. So, we will be providing quarterly reports to counsel and potentially looking at, you know, what is timely or topical and potentially expanding this one. But we wanted to get one to you mid-year as we, we start moving that forward while at the same time working through our audit and prepping for the budget and all those other fun things. So, so yes, absolutely.
And I have a couple of other really quick questions for you, Director Baxter. The budget remaining, you've got at 46.58%. Does that, does that include the police and, and library? So, that's my first question. The second one is around the, that municipal departments have 43.54%. Is, is this, is this where we should be at this point? Do we need to be doing any kind of course correction? Do we anticipate any kind of deficit? Just wanting, wanting to know what, what some of the projections are and just the information about the police and library would be helpful.
Right, so the, you're right, the 46.6% does include the police and library. Ex, or before we include that, we have 43.5%. So, on a, on a full-year basis, right, each quarter would be about 25%. So, if, if you spent the same amount each quarter, you would expect that there would be 50% of the funding, you know, remaining for the year. Typically, you spend less money in the first, you know, in the first quarter of the year while you're ramping up and getting your purchases and things, you know, aligned. So, we, we certainly do have some challenge, you know, in terms of the 44%. I give a few examples of either, you know, incurred repair maintenance that wasn't expected or things like the floodplain mapping, where we've had a good, great opportunity, something council wanted to do, but in order to, you know, get the 50% grant, we needed to start right away. And so, that project on its own is going to be over budget. So, we have talked to the senior leadership team, right? We're, that we are, you know, we are still in okay shape as long as we're adjusting our budgets based on the things that have come up, you know, mid-year. As we're going through the budget process, each division is projecting where they're going to be at for the remainder of the year. And so, as we go through, that'll be one of the conversations that we're looking at as well, is to try and manage that, you know, part as best we can to, to stay on track and aligned, you know, with budget. But like any year, there are pressures. And as you know, the past few years, we've been trying to cut out, you know, there's less and less contingency in the budget each year. So, when we look at something like repair and maintenance, where we know we were budgeting under what the prior year's actuals were, right? We made some progress on that, but we still, especially for repair and maintenance, aren't at the, we didn't, our budget for 2025 isn't even at the actuals level for 2024. So, that's where it starts to bring in more of a risk, you know, into our budget overall. And we do have a stabilization reserve to help offset some of that. But certainly the message here is we need to be careful with how we spend, you know, the remaining funds and as, as, you know, other opportunities, other things come up, we need to take a hard look at whether those are things that we can, you know, that we can do or make adjustments with, you know, our existing plan. So, there's certainly some challenge there, but I, I think it's, it's a manageable, you know, challenge and something that we've discussed at the senior leadership team.
Thank you for that. And I, I certainly want to suggest that, you know, having these, these more regular types, types of reports allows us to, not just for, for obviously the senior leadership team to be looking at their respective departments and how spending is going, but it also provides us with the proper oversight to know where we may need to be course correcting or decisions that are put in front of us where we need to say yes or no, because we don't want to be in a deficit. So, I think it's just going to allow us to have a much better kind of fiduciary duty towards, towards the municipality. So, much appreciated that, that we're getting these. Any other questions or comments from around the table? Counselor Todd?
Yeah, thanks very much. I also appreciate, I, I love having these little report cards so we know where we're at and where we're going. I think this is a really great guidepost. I have a question about the water and appreciating, it may not have an answer, but I know we invested quite a bit in, you know, upgrading the, the water meters, because that was going to bring in a greater amount of revenue. Have we started seeing some of that come forward? Has that represented any of this? Or was that already budgeted when we came forward on it?
No, I don't, I can't, I, I can't recall right now in terms of actual adjustments. I know the company we work with had some like typical, you know, examples of what that may look like. I do think we are seeing some increase based on usage, but we've also had a very dry summer, right? And so, that part is going to have an impact as well, you know, overall. I do know from a customer service standpoint that it is enabling us to reach out, you know, to those who we may not have previously known had a leak. But now with the new meters, we can tell that they have continuous water usage between, you know, say 11:00 PM and 4:00 AM in the morning. And so, you know, now we're able to, you know, identify, whereas before, they wouldn't necessarily know until they got their bill and, and if it was significantly higher than a prior period, which could mean that they had, you know, smaller leaks for an extended period of time. So, it is gonna, you know, it is gonna help out on that front. But the newer meters do, you know, older meters slow down, you know, typically. Newer meters are going to be, you know, more accurate, and, and that's an important, you know, consideration.
Thank you. And I see that Director Tigert's got his hand up, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to add one piece there, we did see a significant decrease as one of our largest industrial customers stopped using municipal water for cooling in 2024. So, just cursory looking at what I see for flows, et cetera, and revenues, I suspect that the increase in revenue that we've seen from more accurate regiment in our, in our meters has gone a long way to offsetting that decreased usage from that largest industrial customer. So, I suspect that we would be in a very much worse position if we hadn't replaced the meters, but I don't think that we will, because our revenues have decreased from the cooling water usage, I don't think we'll see the great budgetary increase that we'd perhaps foresaw.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Director. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, the recommended motion is to receive this for information. Can I get a mover and seconder? Moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor Adam, all in favor. Thank you, and that's passed unanimously. Moving on to 4.4, Report FS 0825, re 2026 Post Retirement and Amortization. Does staff anything further that they would like to add to this?
I'll just remind, this is an annual report, but I would say is that the province's effort back in 2009 to bring awareness to, to councils and to budgets for municipalities that, that weren't maybe having capital spend, that kept up with the amortization, you know, of the historical cost of the, the assets that they had or of the costs that were being, that were accruing for staff who were working but would have some, say, benefits in their early retirement. And so, we're required to do this report to bring that to, you know, your attention. What I am happy to identify is, you know, our, our capital asset amortization, we are now achieving that in our tax levy spend, right? It's, amortization is not a good measure of your spend, but if you're spending less than your amortization, you're definitely in the wrong spot. So, think of this now as a milestone where we can now say, you know, we're now actually spending aligned with our amortization. But really what we should be focused on, as Jeremy was just talking about, is what are average annual requirements, right? So, we're kind of at this bar that the province kind of set. We're not budgeting for amortization, we're budgeting towards, you know, what our actual needs are on a go-forward basis, and so making progress. But, but generally, you know, we would be aligned with this aspect from the province. And the other one is in terms of the post-retirement benefits accrual. And while we don't each year budget specifically for this, similar to on the capital side, our costs incurred are about the same as what we need to accrue each year. So, we just simply accrue at once or we just take the expense each year. But we do have an accrual that is adequate to cover the longer-term liability for library, municipality, and on the, the police is the, the area that has a larger liability. And we, we've stalled a little bit, but we're making progress towards that, and we'll revisit on that front. So, again, we just need to pass this as part of going into the budget process. So, that is the ask of, of counsel this evening.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Director Baxter on this report? Okay, seeing none, the recommended motion is listed on the agenda. Can I get a mover and seconder for this? Moved by Counselor Adam, seconded by Counselor Todd, all in favor. Thank you, and that is passed unanimously. Moving on to Report 4.5 now, WE 0825, re Rural Roads Office Edition 2026, pre-budget approval. Does staff have anything further that they would like to add before we consider this?
All right, yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
The Rural Roads Office Edition has been an ongoing project, and the tender process has now concluded. The tender, however, closed above the available budget allocation. This is a very important project to improve the working, working conditions of our Rural Roads staff. We have, staff have reviewed other We have, staff have reviewed other potential options. However, the proposed design represents a very basic and necessary addition. The project has gone through a competitive bid process and bidder, bidders have advised that the prices submitted are very competitive. In consideration of the funds required to advance this project, staff recommend that council pre-approve the Rural Roads Office Edition as part of the twenty twenty-six budget. This pre-approval will provide the financial certainty necessary to proceed and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Davidson. I, I'm going to just kick off by asking a question about what other options were considered that you had mentioned during the report. If we could just get some clarification before I go around to my colleagues to ask them for their question.
We can look at different types of construction and size of the addition. So this is the smallest addition that we thought would meet the needs of the Rural Roads staff. It is essentially a washroom, a meeting room and two office space.
Okay, you didn't consider things like portables or any other kinds of?
Yes, yes, we did look at portables before we went through the design process. So we looked at portables. They're, they are more expensive than actually building an addition when you consider the long-term ongoing, either the initial purchase price of the portable or the lease of the portable. It actually ended up being more expensive than building our own.
My mute and unmute seems to be a little sticky. I will now turn it over to my colleagues for, for questions and comments. Any, anything further on this matter? Counselor Todd?
Yeah, thank you for this. What's at risk here if this doesn't get approved?
Well, it's, it's, it is the working conditions of our Rural Roads staff. They, they have really poor working conditions out there. They don't have any meeting space. There is insufficient office space and really, they really don't have a sufficient washroom out there.
Thank you. And I'm just going to prove a couple of other lines of, of questioning on this one. First is, this is, this is a significant cost overrun to be contemplating outside of our overall budget discussions. And it's, it's not that for one moment I, I'm not sensitive to the working conditions of, of the Rural Roads staff or in fact, staff across the municipal, across the municipality. But this is a significant ask out of context with other decisions we need to be making on, on budgets. And just given what we've seen on asset managements and the condition of our roads, I, I for one would, would feel more positive about putting some of this money into, to roads other than, than spaces. If, if we, if, if, you know, we had to think about those kinds of trade-offs. And I'm, I'm not proposing that we necessarily have to look at those trade-offs. But I'm, I'm having a really hard time really contemplating this kind of significant cost approval outside of our overall budget conversation. And I, I for one would like to see the cost of some of the other options that were being contemplated so that I can make a, a really fully informed decision about this. Because this is a lot of money for, as you say, a washroom and additional office space. And I just, I'm very, being very prudent about all of my decisions around spending, especially given what we know is going to be a very, very difficult budget season for our municipality and indeed the county.
Sure, we can, I mean, we did obtain prices for the portable. They are, however, approximately a year and a half old now, so they're not, we would have to obtain new prices. And the, the tender is only valid until October. So if, if we don't award this project, then we essentially do have to reissue another tender because we will have to cancel this one.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. So I, I think I share the sentiments of, of most at the table right now is that I've been there. I see how they're working and, and the conditions that they're working in. And of course I want them to have a space. But it is, it is very difficult without seeing the whole picture. So my question is, has, has there been an amount spent so far on design proposals and, and what would that be?
I believe we're at around twenty thousand dollars have spent on design already.
Did you have a follow-up on that, Deputy Mayor? Is that, are you parking it at that?
Yeah, no, yeah, well, just curious about that. And, and you, you have explored, I think you wrote about it in the report, the use of the hub, which well now, most of that space is gone. And has there been any thought about? I know it's not, I know it's far, but we have eventually the fire station number two will be vacant. Has, has there been thought on that where there could be some trucks located in meeting space and washrooms? Or is that not an option?
It, it could be an option. It's something that hasn't been evaluated at, at this time with the uncertainty of actually knowing that the fire station will move ahead. And our work is in the rural area. It's not, not at Fire Station One. That's where all of our trucks and equipment are located.
Sorry, I meant Fire Station Two. The Walkham one is the one I was talking about.
And, and that, that property is far too small for a public works yard.
Thank you. And I wasn't necessarily making a yard. I was just thinking more of as a meeting space and a shower space and a gathering space. That would be a little more central and, and accessible than the Canton is right now. Anyway, thank you for your answer.
Thank you. And I, I'm going to just circle back because I keep harping on this, but I'm going to say final words about this from my, from my chair and then, and then just be quiet about it. I don't really think necessarily that we have to think about the design cost as a, as a, you know, just a money down the toilet. I mean, we can reissue, but I, I really, I feel very strongly about seeing all of the other options can be on the table. I feel very strongly about having this part of our budget discussions. And I, I don't, I don't feel, and it's, it has nothing to do with, there's a lot of competing needs across the municipality right now, and I'm, I'm very empathetic to that. But I just really feel like this, this needs to be part of our budget, our overall budget discussion. So I'm not going to be able to support this, this motion. Counselor Claire?
I wonder, Director Davidson, if you could speak to, I mean, the, the overages, my understanding is, are on materials, right? This is the, the cost of construction materials and it's partly been impacted by the astronomical inflation on non-residential construction, but now the impact of tariffs as well. I also know that this is a project that you started talking to us about three years ago as like a putting it on our radar for future budgets. So this has been in the works for three years, during which time there's no showers, there's inadequate wa- toilets, there's no kitchen facilities. And these are, you know, even for use in the winter when our plow drivers are taking a break in the middle of snowstorms and that. So we understand the need, which is why it was approved to begin with. Can you comment? Do you have any sense of, is this going to continue to get worse? Like if we delay, is the cost just going to continue to go up? Or is there an expectation that things are going to settle when it comes to some of the costs of these materials and construction moving forward?
We were very surprised ourselves when the tender closed. We were not expecting such a, a, a high bid as the low bid. And we, this was one of four bids and the high bid was over eight hundred thousand dollars for a very, very small addition. And we did speak with the low bidder and it is not anticipated to come down anytime, at all. Construction costs are going to continue to rise.
And this, this is, this is the challenge of our times with all of the decisions. And I, and I, again, I, I don't want to make it sound that I, I don't want to contemplate this, but I, I would personally like to contemplate this as part of our twenty twenty-six budget discussions as opposed to pulling it out now and making a decision. Because I'm not certain that there may not be other really pressing priorities that take precedent. And these are difficult and challenging times. And I want to be fully comfortable with all the decisions that I personally make at this table when it comes to our final budget deliberations this year.
Certainly appreciate that. And I would just note that, that you, we talk about road conditions and road maintenance. It, the, it's the staff that are doing the road maintenance that this is supporting.
And, and again, I want to be clear that I am very empathetic and very appreciative of, of the staff. But I'm just, I'm making the point that I'd like this to be from my, from my chair, part of our overall budget discussions. But I think we've probably had enough of a discussion on this. So we, we do have a recommended motion that's listed on the agenda. So can I get a mover and seconder for that? Moved by Counselor Claire. Seconded by Counselor Mink. Any further discussion? Okay, Counselor Adam?
Thank you. I was trying to raise my hand, but I had multiple tabs open. I just couldn't get over to it. So I thought I'd just throw my hand up really quick. So if, if we don't approve this right now and, and we lose this tender and we put it back out in about two months, do you really anticipate it costing that much more or about the same? The only reason I say that is, you know, no, nobody is going to be doing things at a loss, right? So if, if they're doing it at the same timeframe of work, they're going to be change orders or whatever to make up, to make it about the same. So wouldn't it turn out, whether or not we pre-approve it now or we do it at budget, wouldn't it come out to about the same amount of dollars?
The, the challenge is we could also be accused of bitch shopping and be sued. We can't, we can't, we, we have to substantially change the contract in order to reissue it.
Okay, so we have, we have the motion on the table. We have a mover and seconder. Any other further comments or questions for Director Davidson on this? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? And sorry, can you just put, can everybody put their hands back up? Okay, and that is passed. Okay, moving on to Report four point six, DS fifteen twenty-five, Re sixty Henderson Street, Port Hope Affordable Housing Agreement. Does staff have anything further that they would like to add to this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just add something brief. This is a technical report to approve a bylaw authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign and execute an affordable housing agreement, which would formally secure five affordable units that Mayor Hankivski championed in the approved seniors' independent living development at sixty Henderson Street. Really, overall, the, the very fact that this agreement is being presented this evening represents the mayor and council's commitment to advocating for more affordable housing options in our community. And we are happy to bring it forward today for, for endorsement.
Thank you for that, Director McAdam. Appreciate that. Counselor Claire?
No questions, just kudos to everybody who, who made this happen and to you, Mayor Alana, for, for leading these negotiations. I think this is a really good outcome and really happy to see this come forward.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm really looking forward to this community overall. So the affordable units, of course, are, are great news. Just one question, and this, this is a question that I'm asked, and I don't know if you can answer it today, but, but it has been asked of me a few times. Is that from my understanding, the original agreement, if you lived in the building, which I think is the one is where these affordable units would be, they include some meals with that. Would these affordable units include, would they be transparent as far as who they are? Or would that exclude, exclude them from that opportunity?
That is a great question, Deputy Mayor Mink, and thanks for bringing that to my attention. We can certainly check in with, with the wellings to, to confirm. I haven't been provided any indication that these units would be treated any differently if, if that was the, the arrangement. But that being said, we haven't specifically asked as well. So I can check back in and provide a response on that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Director? Thank you, thank you very much for, for taking the negotiation, Director, and actually, you know, making it into a forum that assures us follow-through and implementation. So really, really appreciate that, that final effort to get us over the line.
Thank you.
So the recommended motion is listed on the agenda. Can I get a mover and seconder? Moved by Counselor Todd, seconded by Counselor Claire, all in favor. And that is passed unanimously. Moving on to Report four point, Counselor Attridge, you have your hand up.
I do. Sorry to, to interrupt the flow, Madam Mayor. I'm just wondering, given the hour, I would like to make a motion that four point seven through four point ten be deferred to September sixteenth. As we close up this one.
Okay, it is, I, I do know it is nine, nine twenty-seven. I do see the, the clerks popped up. I, I don't know if, if you wanted to make any comments about this. But yes, we do have, we do still have updates and new business and, and question periods. So if you're formally putting that motion on the table, does anybody want to second the deferral of mostly housekeeping? Counselor Claire, I see you seconding. Any further conversation about this? All in favor? All right, we are, we are deferring that. And then we're moving on then to item number five, which, or notice of motions, of which we have none on the agenda this evening. Moving on to updates and new business. The first brief update is on childcare centers in Northumberland. This week, we're going to be celebrating the achievement of one hundred and eighty-one new childcare spaces created and filled in twenty twenty-five across four facilities in Northumberland County. And two of those happen to be here in Port Hope. A hundred and nineteen new spaces at the former Ruth Clark Center and the Port Hope Community Hub in Canton. This is a historic first for our municipality. This work started in the fall of twenty twenty-two. I'm very proud of the advocacy efforts that I made in order to move this process along. I'm also very grateful to the county for, for their support on this project. Former Minister Leche, who really came through on some of the budgeting red tape issues that we had early in the process. But mostly I'd also like to thank Counselor Les, who was very involved in the Canton hub location with, with the Y, that's the service deliverer there. And, and a big shout out to our staff, our municipal staff, Julia Snook, the director and her team. Julia just went above and beyond throughout the entire process with these childcare locations, taking on work that we hadn't anticipated the municipality taking on. And I think this is going to be an important celebration for our community. And, you know, a hundred and nineteen spots might feel like a big win, but we have to put it in perspective. And I just want to remind all of us that there's probably at two thousand children on waitlists across the county for childcare. And you just think about all the untapped labor force participation and what that means for families that are struggling to make ends meet when they cannot have affordable childcare. This is the very pillar and foundation of any community. And I think we need to do better and we need to do more of these kinds of projects moving forward. So moving on to Ward Boundary Review. The Ward Boundary Review is currently underway. The municipality's consultant, Watson and Associates- Then municipality's consultant, Watson and Associates, has been working with staff to review background documentation and plan next steps for communication and community engagement as directed by council. The consultant will conduct a really thorough engagement process. And this will include, um, an engagement page, a community survey, in-person information sessions. So stay tuned and subscribe for updates on the municipal website to learn how you can participate and we'll have an update on this soon. Um, moving on to the name the snowplow contest, I think this is something that our deputy mayor is gonna be really happy about. Uh, today we launched, um, a lighthearted contest to help, uh, name two Port Hope snowplows until September twenty-fourth. You can submit your most creative ideas at engage dot porthope dot C A, port slash name slash that slash plow. So submissions can be inspired by puns, local landmarks, famous figures, and we can, um, we really encourage you to work in certain words like maybe snow or plow or, or blizzard, but catchy, fun and of course appropriate. So we'll look forward to some of those suggestions. Walton Street update, um, to complete the final milestones of the Walton Street Reconstruction Project. Crews are planning, um, a full road closure on Walton Street from Pine to Mill. Tentatively scheduled from September twenty-second to October third. Sidewalks will remain open during this time, uh, and we do know that closures are inconvenient. We wanna ensure that um, crews will be working as efficiently as possible as, as, as our staff to complete this last piece of the puzzle, the project. That includes, uh, working on maintenance holes, uh, catch basins, preparing and lighting the final lift of asphalt and of course the line painting. So this has been a really extensive and complex. We've talked about this once in a generation project and really the light is at the end of the tunnel. And we're asking the community to stay with us through the final push. Uh, come downtown, support, um, our super resilient businesses and let's carry this work to the finish line. Uh, we've come a long way. Let's keep the momentum strong. Um, do council members have any updates that they wish to share this evening? Hey, seeing none, I didn't, I don't see any hands going up. Uh, we'll move on now to item number seven, excuse me, question period. So it's now time for a question period. This is your opportunity to ask brief, direct questions to council members about matters of municipal business. Please remember, it's not a time to ask questions of staff. So staff can now exit our meeting. Um, operational questions should be directed to staff. Uh, we can email, you can email at admin at porthope dot C A with your operational questions and staff will put them forward to the relevant departments. Um, so questions to council. Please keep your questions concise, uh, simply state your question clearly and directly and of course, please state your name. And, uh, your, uh, location and we will ask clerk to facilitate our question period today uh, during our, uh, virtual session. And I do not see that we have any public remaining with us. Is that, is that correct?
Um, we do have one member of
Oh, we do, sorry. Just, it's not coming up on my screen. So I apologize to the person who is in attendance. Uh, I, I can't see you on your screen, but if they do have a question, um, I will
Yeah, so, sorry, Madam Mayor. Uh, they, they have not raised their hand. Uh, so at this point, we usually tend to give them about five to 10 seconds after the start of a question period. And in this case, the, the person who is, who is logged on has not raised.
Okay. Okay, then, um, we will, we will conclude our question period with, with uh, no questions this evening unless, uh, any council members have any questions that they want to raise at the table this evening. Seeing done, okay. Um, so we, as, as noted earlier, um, Counselor Attridge had, uh, made a motion that was supported to defer a number of house largely housekeeping items to our next, uh, meeting in, uh, September. And the clerk has made a note of that. So at this point, I'm in a position to adjourn our meeting at nine thirty-five P M. Thank you very much, everyone.